I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Before we get underway, there's a few matters that I want to cover first. First, I'll welcome everybody to our July meeting of the Rondicoid Zoning Board of Appeals. The fire exit is located to your left. In the event of a fire, you will be notified by an announcement. If notified, please move in a common orderly fashion to the exit. Do not use the elevator; use either the north or the south stairs to leave the building. The meetings are being recorded by our secretary, Donna, who is recording what takes place to put together minutes of the meeting for us to use in the future. They are not a verbatim record, but when you come to the podium, it's important that you speak clearly and loudly enough so that she can get your name and your address for the minutes. We will follow the items in the order that they appear on the agenda. Extra copies of the agenda are available on the table near the door. Once we get to the hearings that are scheduled, which are scheduled to start at 7:45, not 7 o'clock, we will call the item in the order they appear on the agenda. When the case has been called, the applicant or their representative will come to the podium, be sworn, and then identify themselves, state their address, and present their case. During the applicant's presentation, the zoning board members have an opportunity to question the applicant or to engage in conversations with the applicant. Once that process has been completed, we will open it up to a public hearing. During the public hearing, there are three categories so far of public input that have been identified. One is those who wish to speak in favor of the application. Once we've heard all the people who wish to speak in favor of the application, we'll then open it to those who wish to speak in opposition to the application. After we've heard from everyone who wants to speak in opposition to the application, we then open it to those who don't have an opinion one way or the other, but want to talk about the application. When that is completed, then the applicant or their representative will have an opportunity to readdress the board to respond to any questions or concerns that were raised during the public input portion. Once that has been completed, the hearing is closed, and we will continue on to the next case. Tonight, we're starting with the deliberative portion of the application concerning -- you should know this by now -- 160 Denzmore Road. The public hearing with respect to Denzmore Road is closed. That means that there will be no opportunity for anyone other than board members to speak concerning that matter. Since the last meeting, I have reviewed all of the public hearings, five hours and 46 minutes worth, that have been held with respect to this matter. At every single hearing, there has been noise and some level of disruption from the audience. There will not be any of that. The public hearing is closed. It is for the board to talk among ourselves, to discuss findings, and to make a decision. And we will be doing that. If someone is specifically asked a question, then they're allowed to respond. But other than that, nothing is to be said one way or another. No one is to address the board, no one is to address the applicant, and no one is to address those other people who are here. Once we've concluded the matter with respect to Denzmore, we have one administrative matter concerning lead agency consent with respect to the St. Thomas application, and then we'll take the hearings in the order in which they're presented. Rules that I just reviewed apply to all the hearings as well, not just Denzmore. That's a universal rule. As I said at the last meeting, the only ones that we need to hear are the people who are at the podium. We'll give everyone an opportunity. We were here until midnight last month. We can stay. We've been here later before. We'll give everyone an opportunity to address the board and to speak your opinion. But that's your opportunity. Once that's done, and during the public input, there's no addressing the applicant, all your questions, comments are directed to the board. After the cases have all been heard that are on our agenda, the board takes a break, and then we'll return to deliberate on each case in the order of the applicants that are still present. So if the first applicant has left and gone home, we'll take the second case on the agenda, and then when we finish the cases of those who are still here, we'll go back to the first case and then go down in the order of applicants whose cases were on the agenda but who are not still present. As I said, no further input is allowed at that point. You're welcome to stay and observe the deliberation if you wish to leave. You can find out the results on each case by calling the planning and zoning department, or you can find out by watching on TV if you have Channel 12. So we will call the matter of 160 Denzmore. As I said, this is on for board action, deliberation, and a motion. I would -- hold on. Where's my sheet? Is it here? Do I have a yellow sheet for Denzmore? Oh, there it is. I found it. All right. First off, this matter has already been the subject of a secret determination, and a negative declaration was made by the planning board, which was acting as the lead agency with respect to that. So I will make a motion, but before I get to the actual motion itself, I am proposing that we adopt the following findings of fact with respect to this application. First, the geology of the subject property creates a unique development situation since it contains both steep slope and woodlot e-pods and borders Denzmore Creek. This is a unique circumstance that inhibits the developability of the parcel in the manner prescribed by the town zoning regulations. The property is in an area with a mix of existing uses rather than a strictly single-family area, being located across the street from a school, across the creek from multifamily dwellings including a senior living community, and across from Interstate 590 but bordering Kennedy Circle, a traditional subdivision. Furthermore, this is one of the few large parcels still available for development in the town, so it is one of the few sites that can help the town meet its comprehensive plan goals to expand the current range of options, cost, size, and type, and density to maintain healthy neighborhoods, increase property values, and ensure high-quality housing for all incomes, ensure a range of housing options for new residents. Schools are permitted uses under the R-1 residential district regulations, which means they are considered compatible with single-family development permitted within the district. Therefore, the presence of a school doesn't necessarily contribute to the area's mix of uses as found by the planning board in the secret determination. The nearby senior living facility is located on a major thoroughfare and not on a side street like the proposed development. Additionally, nearby multifamily development is located in different zoning district, R-5, where multifamily development is permitted by right. The proximity to a different zoning district does not mean that the adjacent area is also suitable to similar development. The comprehensive plan's recommendation regarding higher density of housing states that a key consideration in determining suitable locations will be proximity to commercial centers and transit, which would allow multimodal access, a wide transition between commercial and residential areas. This project site is not located near a commercial center, nor does it provide a transition between residential and commercial areas. With respect to the question of whether the hardship has been self-created, I would propose that we find that the alleged hardship is not self-imposed because the applicable land use regulations in the town code became effective after the applicant obtained his interest in the real property. I would also propose that we find that the hardship is not self-created as a code change necessitating the use variance was effected after the applicant consummated the transaction to acquire the subject property. The fact that the applicant has incurred expenses, including the $150,000 acquisition price and professional expenses pursuing the use variance prior to the application for a used variance, does not in and of itself alleviate a finding of self-created hardship. Nonetheless, we find on balance that this factor weighs in favor of the applicant and that the alleged hardship is not entirely self-created, given the 2015 modifications to the town zoning code. With respect to whether or not the applicant has demonstrated that it is unable to realize a reasonable rate of return with respect to the property, I would propose that we find that the applicant has failed to demonstrate that a reasonable rate of return on its investment cannot be realized by any other permitted use or mixture of such permitted uses in the town's R-1 residential district or a subdivision designed pursuant to the town laws clustered subdivision regulations. That the applicant has failed to establish that all uses of land under the town zoning regulations will not allow the applicant to realize a reasonable return. In sum, the applicant has not demonstrated the impossibility of realizing a reasonable return for every permissible use in the R-1 residential district. Further, the applicant has not marketed the subject property for sale and has not demonstrated its inability to realize a reasonable rate of return of its investment through the sale of the subject property. I would also note that in December of 2014, we considered the applicant's appeal from the determination or the code interpretation that had been made by the town, and we affirmed the town's interpretation of the code, and no appeal or action was taken to challenge or contest that determination by this board. Based on those findings, I would move that we deny the variance. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Any discussion?
I would comment that on the question of whether or not the applicant can realize a reasonable rate of return on the subject parcel, I would agree with the chairman's motion that the applicant has not shown that there are no possibilities to obtain a reasonable rate of return. In particular, the applicant has not tried to sell the property. They've not tried to market it. So it seems quite odd that they would say that they can't realize a reasonable rate of return when they've not tried to actually market the subject parcel.
Any other discussion?
My question is, and I've been mulling this since last month, that the question has to do with senior housing. I don't remember any specific proposal to limit this or to make it a senior place. We talked about a variety of incomes and affordability and that kind of thing, but as far as seniors are concerned, I'm trying to, in my own mind, figure out if this is a place good for seniors.
As I went through the five-plus hours of public hearings that we've already had with respect to this, there were at least three occasions on which the applicant indicated a willingness to put in a restriction that it would be limited to senior housing of one sort or another. But I don't think that as a condition -- even if we were inclined to grant the variance, I don't think as a condition of that -- I'm not sure, and counsel can tell me if I'm correct or not, but I'm not sure that we could impose a senior housing condition on a used variance if we were inclined to grant it.
The caution, I think, Mr. Chairman, that you're on to is discrimination, things like that about the mixture of uses. We haven't researched that on behalf of the town. We could do that if that's something that this board's interested in considering before it takes action on this application. But if you think that it's not necessary based on your findings, you can proceed.
No, I've read all the findings that I proposed, so I don't think that didn't factor into it. It was just a question that was raised.
And while I have the microphone, just one thing as a point of clarification. Could I ask the board to go through each and every one of the used variance factors and indicate which, on balance, weigh in favor of the applicant versus which don't weigh in favor of the applicant?
Sure. The first requirement, that the applicant cannot realize a reasonable rate of return, which is to be demonstrated by competent financial evidence. I don't believe that the applicant has met its burden with respect to that, so we do not find in favor of that. With respect to the question of uniqueness, I believe that the property is unique, and the applicant has demonstrated that. So I would say that the applicant has established the factor concerning uniqueness. With respect to altering the essential character of the neighborhood, I've found my findings suggest that that is not -- that the applicant has not met the burden with respect to that factor. And four, that the alleged hardship has not been self-created. That I agree with in the findings that the applicant has established that it's not a self-created hardship. Any other questions or comments from the board? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, and we are concluded on that matter. And we're all present.[1056.86][1056.86](applause) It didn't take as long as I thought it would. Since we noticed the hearings for 7:45 and not for 7, we're going to take a recess.
Was there an additional item during our --
Yes.
There's a lead agency consent on the agenda.
Thank you for reminding me of that. With respect to the application concerning 4530 St. Paul Boulevard, we have been asked to consent to --
To the town board.
-- to the town board serving as the lead agency. So I would make a motion that we consent to the town board serving as the lead agency. And Mr. Upton has seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, and we're all still present. Thank you for reminding me of that. Now we will take a break for 15 minutes, and then we'll check and see. If the applicant was present, I would start, but since it's for public hearing. The hearings were advertised to commence at 7:45. Sir, if you look at the agenda, you will see you're out of order. You can talk to me during the recess. You'll have 15 minutes to do that. You're welcome. We are now in recess for 15 minutes.
All right, we're going to get back underway. With respect to the question that was raised concerning the times of the hearings on the cards that were sent out, and until tonight, I will be honest, I've never seen a card. Because they don't send the cards to us, they send us the agenda with the times on it. The cards that were sent out at the top is what essentially is a form that indicates that we start our meeting at 7:00 o'clock, as we did. And then underneath it with the hearing that is the reason that people are receiving cards, because you're within a certain geographical distance, and I'm not sure what that is, but Ms. Martello could tell you.
Two hundred feet.
Two hundred feet. It lists the hearing time, and if you look at the card, the card that you would have received, if you received the card, you'll see that it has reprinted at the bottom exactly what's taken off of the agenda, which has the time at which the hearing will start, and the first hearing is scheduled to start at 7:45. And the reason for that was because, as I said, we spent, there were five and a half hours of public hearings with respect to the Densmore application. I had anticipated that we would need to spend some time going over that. And I didn't want to have a room full of people waiting, but we did. So I appreciate your waiting, but we couldn't start, because we'd announced it for 7:45, we couldn't start it beforehand. But it's now 7:45, so we will get underway with our agenda if we can call the first case.
Sure. ZB 1707-1, upon the matter request by Ian Smith for an area variance to replace an existing fence with less than required front setback on a corner lot on premises 89 La Grande Road in NR1 residential district.
Hello? Ian Smith, 89 La Grande Road?
Do you raise your right hand? You swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I live on a corner lot, and when it came time to replace a more than 20-year-old wooden fence along the side of my house, I found out that there was a three-foot setback from the property line. And when I moved into the house, there was an original variance because there was a pool there, and the fence that's now grandfathered into that variance is actually six inches over the property line. What I'd like is a variance to reinstall the fence where it is, but just bringing it back the six inches into my property line.
So what you're asking for is a zero setback?
Yeah, that would be optimal.
And that's the wooden picket fence that's there now?
Yes, it needs replacing.
Any questions from the board?
I would just note that we did receive a comment from the town saying that they do not plow the sidewalk there. So I know that in another case, we had an instance where someone wanted a zero setback, but it was right by a sidewalk that was plowed. That created an issue, and I just would note that in this one, there is no plowing of that sidewalk.
Not since I've lived there, which is fine, we take care of our own.
I understand that the new fence you would like to chain link.
Yes.
Is it opposed to the wood?
Yes.
Does that conclude going around that little corner there, I assume?
The corner attaching to the house, you mean?
No, the other end.
Along the driveway?
Yeah.
Well, I have a very nice arbor that I built over there years ago. I would like to take this fence up to the arbor and end it there.
Oh, okay. It really doesn't matter on this case because it has nothing to do with the setback, but I was just curious.
Correct.
Good.
Any other questions or comments? We'll open this up to public input. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about fences and setbacks and something like that? All right, we'll close the hearing. I figured all these people are here for your case.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Well, the next case on the agenda.
ZB 1707-2, upon the matter request by Jennifer Wolfe for special use permit to harbor four hens with coop pursuant to Section 23570 of Town Code on premises 76 Lafayette Road in NR1 residential district.
Hi, my name's Jen Wolfe. This is John Suer. We just bought our first home on 76 Lafayette, and we've always wanted a chicken coop, and we are hoping that you all will allow us to have four hens on our lot.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Looking at the conditions. Could you raise your right hands?
Yes.
You swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Absolutely, yes.
Just for the record, so I get it taken care of first, when I came out and talked to you the other day, well, I guess it was yesterday morning, I went over with you some of the conditions that were being imposed in previous applications, and I've been given a list here. So I want to make sure that I mentioned everything to you and that you have no problems with it before we get underway. First was an annual submission of a health certificate from a veterinarian that the animals are healthy.
Yes.
The coop is to be at least eight feet from property lines and fences. And I think you told me you weren't going to put it off the back fence, but in the middle of the yard towards.
Yep.
It's limited to four hens, no roosters. Town is to inspect and report to us, back to us, within a year as to whether or not there are any problems. No replacement hens for a five-year period, and subject to installing a 24-inch or appropriate depth ground barrier.
When you say no replacement hens, does that mean that if one of our hens passes that we cannot get another one?
These are conditions that I realize now because it talked about, this was from a case, this was taken from a case where there were seven hens that were there already.
Okay.
So I believe what we've done in other instances like yours where people don't already have them and are asking for forgiveness instead of permission, that we limit you to four, and it's a five-year period is what we've done in the past. So if one of them were to die, then I don't think, and I can't speak for the rest of the board, but I know personally, I wouldn't have a problem if you're replacing one that has died within that five-year period.
Oh, thank you. Yes, I understand, no. Absolutely.
There's not to be more than four on the property at times, is what we've, a condition that we've imposed pretty consistently with these applications. And again, since this comes up, I'll explain it. This is a special use permit application, which means that the town board has decided
All right, we're going to get back underway. With respect to the question that was raised concerning the times of the hearings, on the cards that were sent out, and until tonight, I will be honest, I've never seen a card, because they don't send the cards to us, they send us the agenda with the times on it. The cards that were sent out at the top is what essentially is a form that indicates that we start our meeting at 7:00, as we did. And then underneath it with the hearing that is the reason that people are receiving cards, because you're within a certain geographical distance, and I'm not sure what that is, but Ms. Martello could tell you.
Two hundred feet.
Two hundred feet. It lists the hearing time, and if you look at the card, the card that you would have received, if you received the card, you'll see that it has reprinted at the bottom exactly what's taken off of the agenda, which has the time at which the hearing will start, and the first hearing is scheduled to start at 7:45. And the reason for that was because, as I said, we spent, there were five and a half hours of public hearings with respect to the Densmore application. I had anticipated that we would need to spend some time going over that, and I didn't want to have a room full of people waiting, but we did. So I appreciate your waiting, but we couldn't start, because we'd announced it for 7:45, we couldn't start it beforehand. But it's now 7:45, so we will get underway with our agenda if we can call the first case.
Sure. ZB 1707-1, upon the matter of request by Ian Smith for an area variance to replace an existing fence with less than required front setback on a corner lot on premises 89 La Grande Road in an R1 residential district.
Hello? Ian Smith, 89 La Grande Road?
Do you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I live on a corner lot, and when it came time to replace a more than 20-year-old wooden fence along the side of my house, I found out that there was a three-foot setback from the property line. And when I moved into the house, there was an original variance, because there was a pool there, and the fence that's now grandfathered into that variance is actually six inches over the property line. What I'd like is a variance to reinstall the fence where it is, but just bringing it back the six inches into my property line.
So what you're asking for is a zero setback?
Yeah, that would be optimal.
And that's the wooden picket fence that's there now?
Yes, it needs replacing.
Any questions from the board?
I would just note that we did receive a comment from town, the town saying that they do not plow the sidewalk there. So I know that in another case, we had an instance where someone wanted a zero setback, but it was right by a sidewalk that was plowed, that created an issue, and I just would note that in this one, there is no plowing of that sidewalk.
Not since I've lived there, which is fine, we take care of our own.
I understand that the new fence you would like to chain link.
Yes.
Is it opposed to the wood?
Yes.
Does that conclude going around that little corner there, I assume?
The corner attaching to the house, you mean?
No, the other end.
Along the driveway?
Yeah.
Well, I have a very nice arbor that I built over there years ago, I would like to take this fence up to the arbor and end it there.
Oh, okay. It really doesn't matter on this case, because it has nothing to do with the setback, but I was just curious about it.
Correct.
Good.
Any other questions or comments? We'll open this up to public input. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about fences and setbacks and something like that? All right, we'll close the hearing. I figured all these people are here for your case.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Well, the next case on the agenda.
ZB 1707-2, upon the matter of request by Jennifer Wolfe for special use permit to harbor four hens with coop pursuant to Section 23570 of Town Code on premises 76 Lafayette Road in an R1 residential district.
Hi, my name's Jen Wolfe, this is John Suer. We just bought our first home on 76 Lafayette, and we've always wanted a chicken coop, and we are hoping that you all will allow us to have four hens on our lot.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Looking at the conditions. Could you raise your right hands?
Yeah.
You swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Absolutely, yes.
Just for the record, so I get it taken care of first, when I came out and talked to you the other day, well, I guess it was yesterday morning, I went over with you some of the conditions that have been imposed in previous applications, and I've been given a list here, so I want to make sure that I mentioned everything to you and that you have no problems with it before we get underway. First was an annual submission of a health certificate from a veterinarian that the animals are healthy.
Yes.
The coop is to be at least eight feet from property lines and fences, and I think you told me you weren't going to put it off the back fence, but in the middle of the yard towards.
Yep.
It's limited to four hens, no roosters. Town is to inspect and report to us, back to us within a year as to whether or not there are any problems. No replacement hens for a five-year period, and subject to installing a 24-inch or appropriate depth ground barrier.
When you say no replacement hens, does that mean that if one of our hens passes, that we cannot get another one?
These are conditions, I realize now, because you talked about, this was from a case, this was taken from a case where there were seven hens that were there already.
Okay.
So I believe what we've done in other instances like yours, where people don't already have them and are asking for forgiveness instead of permission.
Okay.
That we limit you to four, and it's a five-year period is what we've done in the past, so if one of them were to die, then I don't think, and I can't speak for the rest of the board, but I know personally, I wouldn't have a problem if you're replacing one that has died within that five-year period.
Oh, thank you, yes, I understand, no, absolutely.
There's not to be more than four on the property at a time.
Absolutely.
Is what we've, a condition that we've imposed pretty consistently.
Very fair.
With these applications. All right? And again, since this comes up, I'll explain it. This is a special use permit application, which means that the town board has decided already that chickens in Arundacoid are okay, as are goats and horses and some other animals that are specified in the code. They leave it to us to determine what the appropriate conditions are for those animals to fit into the specific property in the specific neighborhood in which the homeowner wants to locate them. So the question for us is not whether or not chickens in town are appropriate, but under what circumstances that tie into that specific property in that specific neighborhood they're okay, so. All right, so all those conditions, you don't have any problems with any of those, correct?
Not at all.
All right. Go ahead, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, I think we're good.
Yeah, we're happy, as long as it's okay with you guys and nobody has any major problem with it, we'd be happy to have them.
They might all be here for your case, I'm not sure.
Sorry, I didn't mean disrespect. Sorry.
If I can just ask, where did you get the coop? Because you have a picture of it in there.
Yeah, it's my brother-in-law's, and his kids have grown up, and they...
They don't keep them in the coop?
Yeah, where he lives, there's a lot of coyotes and foxes, and they got to theirs, because they were kind of like just running around kind of in their yard, even though there was a, it is completely encased, we're going to let, we have a fenced-in yard, we want to be able to let them walk around, and hopefully, you know, coyotes are, you know, or foxes will get in, but it was really painful for their kids, and he's willing to, you know, let Jen and I have it, and we're really excited, it's like a Cadillac of coops, it really is.
Yeah, it's very nice.
It's year-round heated and climate-controlled, and it's beautiful, it really is, it's beautiful. That's the one in the picture, though, that's the actual one that we have, just to let you know.
It's like a Hilton for the hens.
Yeah, should be good.
How big of a coop is it, square foot?
Oh, God, I don't even know the square footage.
Eight or 10 feet long, I think, and it has like, if they lay eggs, they go down into this little box on the side that you can get into, you can get in both sides, and it also has a fence in front of the actual coop that probably is like four feet or six feet.
I think it's about four or five feet wide, and then about six to eight feet long.
The actual coop, yeah.
And I think that it's meant for about six to eight hens.
And we're having four, or three or four, or whatever.
I see you have a letter from the next-door neighbor saying they're okay with it?
Yes, we've talked to them about it.
Any other neighbors?
We've had one neighbor from across the street who has given her blessing, and the neighbor on the other side of us, the house is empty there right now.
On the other side, and then behind our house is, it's like, the RG&E, I think, owns, has the property in some way, it's the town, it's your guys', it's the towns', but you guys have given them the accessibility for reasons of wires and whatnot, and the other people are nearly, I think about 100 yards away.
Yeah, they're pretty far.
You know, they're like down and on the other side, and like on another street over there, they're very far away, and, you know, we want to know how everybody feels about it, but I've discussed that with them too, but I didn't get it in writing.
Okay.
Because I've only pretty much been like, hey, we're thinking about doing this, and they're like, okay!
Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we'll open it up to public input. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about chickens and hens and ducks? Yes, ma'am?
I actually would. Hi, I live two doors down at 88.
Can you come up to the microphone, identify yourself with your name and address, please?
Amber Johnson, 88 Lafayette Road, 14609.
Yes.
I just wanted to kind of come and learn a little bit more about it. I grew up with chickens, but out in the middle of nowhere, so is there any feedback on bringing animals that might come as pests in the neighborhood or smells?
That's part of the reason...
Was my questioning.
It's part of the reason why we asked the town to follow up and check with neighbors in the first year. Checks that the town has done with respect to other chickens and animals that we've approved have not resulted in any feedback to us that indicates that they have created a problem. We've had a number of concerns that people have raised about them, but they all seem to have been addressed by the owner of the chickens, and the occasion when we had a specific complaint, and I went, spent a half hour on a Sunday morning, standing at the fence to hear the chickens, it was the dogs in the neighborhood that I heard, not the chickens, so. We have, no problems have been brought to our attention.
Fantastic.
We have denied a couple where there has not been enough property, room, to have chickens compatible with, I mean, postage stamp thing, and the coop's going to take up, you know, most of it, so.
Wonderful.
Mr. Chairman, there was one instance on Seneca and Daly that they did have a rat infestation.
That was with ducks, wasn't it?
It was, we originally approved ducks, and then the people had sold the house and kept the ducks, the due owners, and then they added chickens to it.
That's correct.
And I don't know if they kept it as nice as the previous people, but there was a rat infestation. Now, I know they had an exterminator come in and try to take care of the situation, but I hear that it might be back.
Oh, really?
So that would be the only one that would, that I know of out of all of them that we've done that has had an issue. They do live right down the street from the stores, whether or not it's drawing them in, I don't know, but I'm not sure how it stands at this point, but they did have a problem, I know of, and again, they tried to get rid of it with the exterminator.
Okay.
And again, as we've said in the past, if there's any neighbors or the owners themselves who notice some kind of an issue, it needs to be dealt with right away, and, you know, obviously, if it's not, and it's brought to the town's attention, then the town will take appropriate steps to, because our intention is to carry out the town board's determination that these animals are okay in town, and just to make sure that through the conditions that we impose, that in that particular spot, they're okay.
Wonderful, thank you.
All right, thank you.
One question. You have an internal coop, what's your cleaning schedule, and how does the humus or the scat at the bottom, how are you planning on getting it out of the cage?
I'm glad you brought that up, actually, because I've been thinking about that. The coop, I don't, I honestly don't know how often we're going to need to...
Can you speak into the microphone?
Yes. So I don't know how often we're going to need to clean it, I think we're going to have to experiment with that a little bit, but the coop itself, the back of it, the whole thing opens up and it's raised, so it'll be fairly easy to clean out, and we have a compost pile that we plan on composting the droppings and hay.
If that works out at night.
Excuse me, I'm so sorry. Can I ask you to come back up to the podium and just provide your answers so that for folks viewing at home? No, thank you.
Is this the one, or is this it, or where am I going? This one? Okay, yeah, I've looked into it too, like if there is starting to be a problem, if there's something that we're seeing, believe me, she grew up going down to a farm in Ohio, I grew up going in Genesee, and we had chickens and ducks and all that, and there was different problems, and we had to deal with it accordingly. Out here, I don't think it's kosher to the way that they dealt with it there, but there is online, I've looked it up, some really, I think, pretty humane ways of disposing of these animals if they do come onto our property, and if nobody has a problem with that, because I think I'm planning on making almost like an easy way for them to go in, and then making sure it's short up well, and then if they do come in, it'll be, it's very, it's with four DC cell batteries, and it's a quick shock, and then we'll dispose them accordingly if you guys don't have any problem with that.
Hopefully, we'll avoid it altogether.
We hope not to have any, but we're planning on keeping it clean. I don't want anybody to have any problem with it.
I think that's the key, if it's kept, if it's kept, if it's kept clean, typically, it's, there are no issues, but if...
We will.
If you keep the food, it's important that the food is kept in either indoors or in sealed containers where the varmint can't smell it.
Right.
To be attracted to it. Typically, I think most people kept it, kept the food in metal containers in their garages.
Right.
And anyway, and kept clean, kept the coop clean.
Yeah.
And people make sure to put the fence around the coop at least 24 feet.
24 inches.
In a certain, yeah, 24 inches, rather, that's the right type of mesh so that rodents can't get through it.
That sounds good to us, too.
I think that's already on the actual coop itself.
Yeah, I think it does have something that goes down like that, I do.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Was there anyone else that wanted to address this application? I think we got on a tangent. Okay, all right, we'll close the hearing with respect to this case and move on to the next one.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
ZB 1707-3, upon the matter of request by Edward Aiman for an area variance to construct a 48-foot-by-20-foot-by-12-foot-high detached garage exceeding maximum square footage and garage frontage on property 828 Howlandale Road in an R1 residential district.
Mr. Aiman, is it you, Mr. Aiman?
Yes.
I need you to raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. And you reside where?
I reside at 183 Shore Cliff Drive in Grease, and I'm proposing to build a new home on 828 Howlandale.
If memory serves me correct, sir, you were at the board a year ago for this application to build this garage and also a house that you're going to be building, and the setbacks and the different approvals were given to you?
It wasn't a year ago, it was within, I think...
February 6th.
Yes, sir.
And we had given you the, we had given you, we had given you this garage, but we wanted you to cut it back so that it fit within that 900-foot footprint?
Yes, and I actually, after I was doing more calculations on the garage, I realized that when you open up the doors, they'll hit each other, and I have classic muscle cars, which are very, you know, they're being restored, and when I put them in the garage, when I open up the doors, actually, it actually deducted six to make it five, so I would, you know, I was asking the board if, you know, ideally, it would be 54 feet wide, and then that would give us enough room to open, you know, not even opening up two doors, but one door, they would be on, on top of each other, basically, and then that three feet that was the compromise actually does away with one of the bays, so I'm, you know, I'm still building a garage, but three feet doesn't cut the price down. I'm losing a bay, so...
You haven't started any of the project yet, right?
No, I have not.
Right. Again, I remember having this part of the conversation prior to, are there different garage doors that you could use, overhead doors as opposed to swing doors?
We're at eight, eight feet, so basically, we figured ideally, if it was nine-foot times six would be 54, that would be just enough room to open the door. 45...
When you're talking about opening the door, are you talking about the garage door or the doors of the car?
When you get in the car, you pull in the garage to get out, to open the door, you're like this, you're crunched. So I was asking the board, you've got the expressway there, which isn't a very good view anyhow, so...
This isn't going, this is going to be, as I see it from what was approved in February, I wasn't here then, but it was five bays, right?
Well, we were wanting six, but...
I know you wanted six, you were approved for five, right?
Yes, yes.
For the 900 square feet, and when you pull in, you're telling me that it's going to be all open in there, isn't it?
Well, when you have the cars in, they're not going to be able to, you're not going to be able to open the door.
Well, how wide are the cars?
Well, a typical car, I have a '59 Thunderbird that's like seven feet wide, six and a half feet wide.
And so, seven times five, the math, the way I learned it, is 35 feet, and you've got an extra 10 feet, so if you've got five bays, you've got an extra two feet on each side, so you've got three feet, so a foot and a half on each side, which means there's three feet between the cars. Are the doors more than three feet?
A couple of the cars, the doors are big.
Well, again, part of it is the fact that we approved it for the size, for the five bays, and now you want to make it six bays. I believe it's just, in my opinion, it's enough garage. I understand you've got a collection of cars, and I appreciate that, but that shouldn't be, we already made, again, my opinion, we already made a decision on what the size should be, how much you can store, you know, and if you can get more in there, great, but to make it a six-bay garage and make it bigger, I don't, I think we, I'm pretty sure we had all this conversation the last time, I think I'd cut it back to the five bays and then, you know, utilize it to the best of our ability.
Is it still going to be 20 feet deep?
Yes. I thought, coming before the board to ask, the view is the expressway?
I understand that, but...
And the garage would actually block a lot more of this expressway, and the neighbors are actually for it, because they don't have to look at an expressway, and being higher, it's going to block a lot of the sound from the, I mean, it's an improvement, and I'm spending, you know, a lot of money on the house, in the garage, and I just thought, you know...
So if I, just so if I understand correctly, what you're asking us to do tonight is the same thing you asked us to do in February, and we told you no, we're only going to let you do 45 feet, and now you're back asking, five months later, asking us to change our mind?
Well, it was a compromise of the three feet, but I didn't take in effect that it was losing a whole bay. I didn't, that's why I'm back here, asking the board if I could have the extra three feet.
I believe in the house that you're putting up, there's also garage space there too, right?
No, sir, there isn't. There's a home theater in the house, that's where the garage was. The enhanced plan shows, and I can't have two garages in the town of Arundacoid, so I chose to make that a home theater. I'm spending a lot of money, and I'm going to be paying a lot of taxes, so the three feet was really important to me. I'm not, you know, it's blocking the expressway.
We've had a lot of people come and ask us, because, that they ask us for variances to allow them to have larger garages, because they have a lot of stuff. And as we like to say, as the chairman likes to say, these variances run with the land, and the question is, is there something unique about the land that necessitates this variance? And it sounds like what you're saying is, there's nothing really unique about the land, there's something unique about how much stuff you have. So you want us to grant a variance so it can accommodate all the stuff you have, and that is not the type of variance that would necessarily run with the land, that's something that runs with the applicant, and in this, you know, board member's opinion, that does not meet the standard that is necessary for the type of variance.
Well, I'm looking to block the view of the expressway, too, you know, it's pretty, I mean, you drive down the driveway and you see the mother, the motherhouse where the nuns are, they're looking in the back, and they're looking at the expressway. They were all for the garage being bigger, because it's blocking all of their view, and I'm spending thousands and thousands of dollars on arborvitae's and real nice fencing to make my property nice, and the three-foot is actually another bay, and it blocks the view of the expressway, and it knocks the sound down. You know, it's three feet.
Before you filed this application or the last application, did you review what the elements are that were required to find in order to grant an area variance?
Yes, I understood that it was only 30 feet wide, I was asking for 48 feet.
No, the factors are that you have to show practical hardship. You have to show something about the configuration of the land or something about the land that makes the town's requirements for setbacks and square footage inappropriate for your piece of property. Not that you have a number of cars that you need to put in, and the doors are big, and that doesn't have anything to do with the land. Now, the fact that you're spending thousands of dollars is very nice, but that also doesn't, that's not one of the factors in deciding whether or not a practical hardship exists. And when you, there's also, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, someone, but if you have an application in front of the board and it's denied, you cannot bring another application for a year, right?
If it's, I believe that's the case, that if it's denied, it cannot be brought, but in this case, the, are you talking about the past application within February?
Yeah.
So in this instance, it was approved, the applicant actually, and I don't, and perhaps the board members will remember differently, and we can certainly check the record, I recall there being discrepancy in the application, in one place it said 45, and one place at the time back in February, it said 48, and the applicant indicated that they were seeking 45 at the time. Again, somebody could certainly correct that if I'm wrong.
In theory, that's consistent with my recollection. There was ambiguity between the application form and the plans, and the applicant during the hearing stipulated the 45-foot request.
Correct, and so in this instance, then, it's really not a, wasn't a case, this applicant's coming back to present a design change.
So the applicant amended it, not the board? But I wasn't here, so I'm not...
Yeah, so my recollection is that there was just a discrepancy in the information that was in the application, and two different numbers were proposed, and so at, during the time of the public hearing, the clarification was sought. The applicant indicated at the time that 45 would suffice, and that may have been because that would have been within the, while it was exceeding the width requirement, it was complying with the square foot.
900 square foot.
Correct, and so it may have been a concession that the applicant decided was, and I can't, certainly the applicant can address that.
So the one-year rule doesn't apply? So it's our...
I made a mistake, sir.
No, no, no. I just was trying to find out if procedurally it was blocked by the one-year rule, it's not. So it's up to the board to determine whether or not you demonstrate a practical hardship.
But Mr. Chairman, I think we debated it, and the element that reduced the square footage was denied. So doesn't that, that portion of our discussion, I'm not a lawyer, I don't play one on television, but doesn't that portion of that denial then go, come into the one-year mark? In other words, even though we approved the application, the portion that we denied should be denied for the one-year period?
Well, you know, it was my error then, because I thought it was condition, and he's considering relief from the condition of the board, and so...
And just to clarify, what had happened at the hearing was, the ambiguity was asked about, and then the applicant verbally amended his application to request 45 feet, so there was no actual action or denial on the 48, it was a modified application. That being said, I defer to the board on your recollection, but I do recall there being some discussion about the house and the variances requested for the house being approved because there was a smaller garage. I don't know if that's consistent with Mr. LaPerry's recollection, but that's mine.
Again, I remember the 900 square feet and the 45, I'm trying to give this gentleman a different way, he's got, he's showing in his plan, he's got six garage doors that are seven feet wide, if he eliminated and made it three garage doors, he could lose a foot, a couple of feet, and make those garage doors wider to get cars in and out. Again, there is an alternative, in my opinion, and it's, again, we had this conversation, and it sounds like we're going over it again. I believe, in my opinion, it should stand the way we initially gave it to him, 900 square feet with 45 feet wide, if he has a problem getting cars in and out. Instead of having six individual doors, he goes with the three double doors. Makes it easier to get them in and out.
Two double doors and a single door.
Or whatever the combination, but I think the 40, you know, it's a collector's warehouse for his collectibles, and I can appreciate collectible cars. I, again, I appreciate them a lot, but we all find a way to get them in the garage. And this is a big garage, and I think it should stand the way we initially approved it.
Mr. Chairman, I have a slightly different opinion about this, and I understand where everybody's coming from, but this request that he's making is really not very substantial. In fact, it's, anybody walking by wouldn't even notice, whether it's 40, what is it, 45 or 48 feet? And it seems like if he's going through the process of re-entering the application and trying to get it so it's like he really wants it, personally, I don't have a problem with that, so I...
And I see your, I see your point, Russ, I just, again, going to Mr. Bolino's point in reference to large garages in the town, even though this one happens to be in a good spot, but there are a lot of people that want to put a large garage in their backyard, and it's just not appropriate. And this one, the way we originally approved it is, is fine, I mean, you know.
I agree with you and I don't.
It'll do what, it'll do, in my opinion, it'll do what he needs it to do.
Well, yeah, but he was just saying he can't open the doors of the car because it's not wide enough.
Well, if he goes, if he goes from a five-bay garage to a six-bay garage and he adds three feet, and he's adding half a foot, six inches for the door, as I see it.
I'm asking for three feet, because I know you guys aren't going to approve 60 feet, okay?
You're right.
So, I mean, it's three feet. You know, I mean, I'm paying for, you know, I'm paying for the...
What was the request the first time? How many feet?
Forty-five.
So 45, but what is allowed?
So 30 is the maximum width.
30 is the maximum, so he was already granted 15 additional feet?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I guess what I take exception to is, when we say, "large garage is out of place in town," and you may be absolutely right, but we do things on an individual basis, I mean, chickens included and everything else, individual basis. We don't ever, you know, all the time I've been on this board, acted under just precedent. Well, we've never done it before, so let's not do it. I think his, I think his request is reasonable, and I'm not saying I would suggest how many doors he has, because it's not, that's not the issue, in my opinion. It's the number of feet across.
Yeah.
And if you have the feet, you'll figure out the doors, right?
Right.
So, and it's not up, if I remember right, this place kind of sits back off of Howlandale, it's not right out in the view of the main part of the town, and if it's a benefit to your neighbors...
Well, it's a major benefit, that you don't see any more of the expressway.
That's where I'm coming from.
Any other questions or comments from the board? All right, is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone like to talk to us about garages? All right, we'll close the hearing with respect to this application. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
DB 1707-4, upon the matter of request by APD Engineering and Architects, acting as agent for Aldi Inc., for an area variance expand, expand the existing building totaling 21,873 square feet exceeding maximum allowable square footage on premises 2194 Hudson Avenue in an MUC mixed-use commercial district.
Oh, Steve Cleason with APD Engineering and Architecture?
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
Okay, what we have presented to you is four different plans, which I do have copies with me if you don't have them with you. The intent is really, Aldi is expanding their stores throughout the country right now, and this is one of the stores that they'd like to do in this upcoming year. So we're here to seek a variance to do the expansion. Luckily, I guess, I call it luckily, is there is a space adjacent to this building within the existing footprint. So what we would like to do here is to basically move the wall over, but because of the way the district is zoned, the building square footage is limited. So to meet the original approvals, this wall was constructed per the building code to be actually a separate building. What we're seeking here is to have approval that the building would be treated as one building. That way, when we build the tenant wall internally, it would be able to be a tenant wall instead of a full block wall all the way through the roof. It's really, it is a little more flexibility for the tenant space at a later date. You know, if you go through my letter that I presented with it, I went through the five, you know, different factors.
Can you, sorry, I don't want to cut you off, but could you remind us what were the variances we granted initially when this property was constructed?
Uh, I...
Because if I don't, if I can recall, having this wall there was quite a sticking point in that we needed it to...
Needed it at the time, we did get a variance, though.
Well, we needed it from a legal standpoint.
Um, no, actually, you granted us a variance to go over. We were allowed up to 15,000 square feet. We received a variance to go to the 16,000, and we, we could have gone bigger, but that was at the time the size of the building that we had asked. But to allow for the building to be, fall within that 16 and still have the full 21 because of the unique shape of the building or the site to fit buildings on there and get the square footages that we were looking for, we actually made this building a little thinner and a little longer. So what we intended was to make tenant space in there. Well, and today, we haven't been able to lease that space, or Aldi hasn't been able to lease that space, so what they're looking for, instead of making an expansion, all the other stores are actually expanding adjacent to the building. We're saying, why do all the disturbance to the site? This whole site could go with virtually no environmental impact whatsoever, everything would be internal. The only thing that would be noticeable from the outside would be is a couple of windows would be moved over or be lost where that area would be expanded over to.
Would there be any way for you to expand it outside? I mean, apart from doing that, moving the wall? I mean, you would have to get a variance to expand it in any way, isn't that right?
We would, but it, this...
Because I seem to recall that when Aldi asked for the application the last time, people complained that this wall was a fake wall, and that Aldi was going to take the wall down and make their store bigger.
They, they may have misunderstood the building code, but the building code is clear that this was two separate buildings because of the way it was constructed, you know, so that was why, and I think there was a lot of confusion in respect to that. But what we're saying now is, we'd like to expand the building, we'd like to keep the store viable in there, all the people that use the Aldi store are looking forward to the additional items that we'd be able to bring to that store and the convenience of it, and this is the only way that we could see doing it without actually interfering or upsetting the site plan.
How many feet back, and looking at all the plans, I see where the walls moved back, but there's no dimension there.
I believe there's two plans. Originally, the tenant space was 69 feet wide, and if you go to the, excuse me a second. The next one we did provide was the updated plan, and now it's 46, so that's about 23 feet that we'd be moving over.
You're not actually changing the face of the store with the exception of moving a door?
Well, there'd be a couple of windows removed associated with that tenant space, and that's on the elevation that was provided.
Well, I see it, okay. The first section of windows would be removed. The door, the door, existing side door would be moved back one section.
Right, correct. And really, the reason why we've asked for the entire building is more or less just for the flexibility for any changes that would be made in the future. Instead of it having to be a masonry wall that would be, have to be taller down through the ceiling, this would allow for tenant wall space, which is more common in a strip center. You know, it was never intended, thank you, it was never intended to, you know, at the time when they built it, they built a store that was the most up-to-date at the time. This is, you know, I've been in front of a number of different towns throughout the New York, or New York State area, and they're in this process throughout all their stores. So this is just the town, and they look at the best way to try to do that expansion.
The alternative would be ugly, the alternative would be coming into the parking lot.
Correct, and that's how we've done a lot of the different stores in there, and then what it does, it leaves the tenant space set back from the front of what then would be the new Aldi's building. You'd be adding square footage, which is our impacts to traffic, you know, there are impacts to the parking, there's impacts to the overall site and development and how it flows.
I mean, I think another alternative would be to leave it how it is, which is in compliance with the town code. I mean, I don't think that the alternatives are the wall or build off the side of it. I just want to make sure that we don't think those are the only two options here.
I think you always have to remember that for any operation to stay competitive in an area, when you make those kind of analogies, that you do put the business in an awkward position that they can't carry all the products. This may be a store, if you cap and force it to be smaller, that people would stop going here and go to their other facilities, and eventually, it may be a store that was inadequate to stay open. I'm not saying I can't make it, I'm not work for Aldi's, but I'm just talking, I've worked for businesses throughout, and when they can't flex with the market area, you know, it's harder for them to compete, and we're here to try to stay competitive.
What is the size of this store, what is the size of this store compared to your other stores?
Right now, their expansions are right between 18,300 and 18,500 someplace in area. A couple of them are a little bit bigger because they may be in, hey, strip centers, where when you move the wall, it actually goes to 19,000 or something like that, but that's a ballpark figure, it's around that 18,500.
When I was looking at one of these plans, had a note on it. Yeah, this one. C2 drawing.
Yep, that'd be the site plan, and that was created from the original site plan.
Right. It says, "existing tenant, existing Aldi store, proposed Aldi store, proposed tenant." And on the application, you're asking for a variance of 5,021 square feet.
Yeah, that's, again, because if we went by the, the space that's there between the tenant and the other one, we would be required to take that, per the building code, would have to become a block wall through the roof, which really doesn't add anything to the benefit to anyone in this community, except for a really high expense. I mean, there's nothing of value to that.
But the, where it says, "proposed tenant," it says 3514 plus or minus square foot, and then it says, "existing tenant, 5,017 plus or minus square feet." So it seems to me that's a difference of 1,503 square feet, plus or minus.
Okay.
Adding the 1,500 on to the 16,8 takes me to, I think, 18,3, not 21,8.
That's what I'm trying to explain. In the building code, if we took the building code and put it per distance, if we put that wall in the way it is right now, which is the block wall right through the roof, then the building code considers that to be two separate buildings. So then you would have basically an Aldi's building per the building code, and you'd have a separate building for the tenant space. And that's what was done originally to basically break off that and keep the square footage of the overall building different. What we've requested was to give us the variance for the entire building, instead of building a block wall all the way through the roof and meeting the building code for a separate building, we would just consider the one building as one full building so that it can be demised by tenant walls instead of being a block wall through the ceiling, because there's just, there's no advantage of having that wall internally be block wall, other than to basically meet the building code as a separate building, which to me, doesn't make a whole lot of improvement to where we are in the overall strategies of the site, the environmental impacts, the impacts to the neighborhood, or anyone else.
Okay. That's where I was unclear. So you're talking, what you're asking us to do is approve for Aldi's, the entire building that's already there?
Well, what it is, is, the code, what I'm asking you to do is, consider that the code only allows a building size of a certain size. So if I build that wall between the tenant and Aldi as a tenant wall, then the entire building is considered to be one building, even though Aldi's not occupying the entire building. But if, the only way I can get around that would be to use the building code where it would be completely a masonry wall right through the roof, very expensive, and it really doesn't do any benefit at all for the, for Aldi's, the tenant, really doesn't, you know, improve anything for anyone other than it allow, you know, the code to be more... you know, improve anything for anyone other than it allow, you know, the code to be more closely met.
But if we, if we approve this at twenty-one thousand square feet, what's to stop Aldi's from just moving into it then?
At that time, there would be nothing. Um, but I mean, at that point in time, Aldi has no reason to occupy that space. But what would be the fear of that?
That's not the question. What's to stop them, if we approve it, what's to stop the manager from coming in here two years from now?
As you condition it to the idea-
I got approval for twenty-one hundred square feet, or twenty-one thousand-
You can condition the approval that if Aldi goes beyond the tenant wall that's proposed, that they come back before the board for approval. I mean, at this point, we're-
It seems to me that's why we said it had to be an actual wall, it had to be two buildings. That's why we decided this the last time, is so we would not get into this kind of dance. So it does seem to, uh, it does seem that the question is, why not just get the entire building and build Aldi's as big as you want?
Take the wall out.
But we handled this before, and anyway.
My recollection of our, when this was in front of us originally was that we were trying to accommodate Aldi's request with the requirement for the, the limitation on the building that was imposed in this mixed-use or multiple, whatever the-
Multi-use.
Multi-use district that's there in the Titus Cooper Hudson, uh, part of town. And, but if I understand you correctly, what you're talking about won't be, won't affect in any way what's outs, what's visible from Hudson Avenue, what's visible from the parking lot. The only difference is going to be within the confines of what's already there, how much space Aldi's can use as opposed to-
For-
And they could use the, I suppose they could open the tenant space, the second building now, as, you know, get your produce there and buy everything else in what we've already approved, and-
It would make a, a sales nightmare, but yes, I, first of all, I want to go back to what you're, you're stating. You're making it sound like we, we, you restricted us. We came to you with what we needed for a building size, and we were trying to maximize the building within that area and make a mu, a mixed-use facility. At the time, Aldi's came with, with a footprint of what they thought was realistic for this market and what they were operating with, their prototype at the time. It wasn't a restriction that the town put on us. The town's restriction was that you, you were limited to the fifteen thousand square feet if you did all of the other items. And then Aldi said, well, we need another, I think it was, let's say, fifteen, so sixteen, so we went to a fifteen hundred or something like that, that we added on to that to get to that. And then to keep the buildings so that they were kind of laid out in a mixed-use format, we kept that as more of a little bit longer so that we could keep it open and allow the different units to work together and meet the intent of the mixed-use. It really wasn't that, we, we said, okay, Aldi's can only be this big. If Aldi had come in and said, we wanted seventeen thousand five hundred at the time, that's what we would have done. But that was not what the proposal was. It's just that right now Aldi is proposing that their, their prototype is closer to an eighteen thousand five hundred. They have started getting into selling gluten-free, a lot of healthier foods, they're just a lot more products that we're trying to bring to this market, and we're, you know, they're just trying to be able to make this compatible with this market area and keep the store functioning at its top ability.
I think also, go ahead.
So what you're saying is that Aldi underestimated the success of the market, and you hamstrung yourself by building a smaller store, now you're coming back and asking for a larger store to expand your market?
Well, I, if it was just market, that would have been one thing. But what Aldi does is, and they've been successful at it, is that, I mean, they're nationwide, they're all the way out in California. They develop other products to carry. When they first started, they carried like six hundred and fifty products. And you, if, you know, I don't know how many people are familiar with Aldi's, but typically, if you go wa, you go into an Aldi, there's one ketchup, okay? There's not going to be eighteen different brands, there's going to be one. But what they have found is, over the years, is that there's different types of products that people are looking for now that may not have been relevant at the time when they were looking at that prototype, that sized prototype. Now that things have gotten different with gluten-free diets have become, have exploded, and people are looking for those kind of items. You look at, um, uh, healthy foods, there, there's so many more people are reducing salts or doing so many different things on a healthy side of it, and they've tried to expand the products that they carry within the facility to meet those wants and needs. To do that, because of the way they're set up, I mean, if you look at any other grocery store, this thing is tiny compared to, you know, a Wegmans or a Tops or a Walmart, you know, this is a fairly small little area, and that's why it fit within this mixed-use. But unfortunately, that means that they're tight, so if they add product, they have to, you know, have a little bit of room to flex. And that's what's happened, is they, they've found that they could add product and, um, improve their being successful.
I remember back when the, the plan was laid out, the awkwardness of the back room and the, uh, loading docks was a design, um, problem. And the fact that they made that, um, back room, a long, narrow back room that went to the loading docks, um, you were trying to make, make it fit where it was environmentally correct, it was good for the character of the neighborhood. And I remember looking at the plan originally, it looked a little weird, but then again, it, whoever designed it, it was a good idea. And I know the planning board looked at it, and everybody looked at it, there was, you know, some different, uh, but it came out well.
I mean, it was very difficult, I mean-
But it, it also limited your expansion because it's a long, narrow back room that's behind that other existing empty space. Um, so if they wanted to expand into their own back room, they really can't because it's, it's, it's an awkward space. So I think this makes a lot of sense going into the empty space, the empty space hasn't been rented. Um, and, uh, again, in my opinion, I think it's, it's a good idea.
Uh, again, I, I don't want anybody to misunderstand. I mean, Aldi, you know, when I think they bought this purchase, I'm not, you know, able to know, you know, what they spent, but I know they went to greatly, to try to meet all the intent and the requirements. I think they tried to maximize the site to make it viable, you know, because, you know, a standalone Aldi on the site wasn't a viable alternative. So they looked at how they could put their uses on this site, get it to flow in a mixed-use type of format, because that's why the sidewalk came in the middle and we had the sidewalks break out, we have building potentials over here, building potentials over there. And the idea was that it would also flow back to the possibility of the residential district in the rear. A lot of that thought and, uh, evaluation went into, with the planning board especially, much more than probably here, we presented a lot of that here, but it really, the, the dialogue was with the planning board. And we spent a lot of time trying to create, and we, I, I can't even tell you how many alternatives we looked at at moving the buildings and, and putting them around to try to get an alternative that best fit this site. And the way that tenant space laid out was the, the best way to get the tenant space on the site and keep the ability for the, uh, all of the access that they wanted, the bike access, the pedestrian access, and all that to work and flow the way that the, at least with the planning board and us working with them, seemed to work the best. So that's why that tenant space got located there. The problem was, at the time, there was a lot of pressure on us to minimize the building. So the only way for us to keep a long, narrow building and try to minimize that size of that building was to say, okay, how much do you need, Aldi? Then the rest of it, because the building code allowed it, you could put up a wall, and at that time, if you put up that wall, it looked at it as two different buildings. Uh, you know, if, if, if the board required us to go back and say, okay, we're only going to give you that expansion, yes, we could build the masonry wall there, and the tenant space would be a separate building. However, it just doesn't seem to benefit, and it seems to be a hardship that's unnecessary because it does nothing as a benefit to anyone that's around it, as a neighbor or anybody else operating there. It's just an additional expense that really doesn't benefit anything.
I, I still don't think that the construction of that wall is the issue. This application sounds a lot like the gentleman who has too many cars and wants a bigger garage. So, I mean, it's just what it sounds like to me.
All right, all right, enough.
Um, again, I don't know how to better explain, you know, Aldi is trying to build a facility-
Quiet!
Aldi's trying to stay competitive in the market, and they're doing their best to, you know, bring more product to the market. I mean, you know, when a business is trying to be successful, and they're trying to do their best to do that, and we're trying to work within the town, I mean, if there was another idea that you'd like to put toward us to, to provide that additional area, I mean, you know, there's going to be competitors, and there are already competitors, not here in Arundacore, but throughout the country, that are already trying to mimic Aldi, and they're going to probably sooner or later come into this area. And if we're not able to, you know, develop our prototype and, and, and do their, uh, projects in the way that they feel best allows them to compete with those, it's going to be hard for them and difficult in this market to stay, you know, feasible.
Has the tenant space been marketed for the last three years?
There's been signs there. I know they work with the real estate, I, I can't speak to that specifically, but I know that there's been a sign, I believe, in that windows for a long time, and I believe, uh, they do, they work with real estate people. I, I know that they have contacted us a couple of times with possibilities, but, you know, nothing's really actually, you know, been able to come forward. This is kind of a, a very unique market, you know, for retail right now. There's, uh, as you can see, there's a, you know, a lot of people that are having a difficult time filling, uh, you know, facilities like this, because there's just so much of it's about being bought on the internet. You know, services and, you know, others, facilities like that are successful, um, but we just haven't found one that really wants to, you know, come into that, that tenant space.
I guess they're going to be dropping bags from drones in a few minutes. Mr. Bills, hold on, you'll get a chance.
So, you know, that's, you know, they have, they've done what they can in respect to trying to find someone to fill that. There would be no reason for them not to want to fill that tenant space. They, they had no knowledge at the time that they would want it, or else they would have asked for it at the time. Actually, this has been a pretty big, this is going to be a huge expense to take down this wall because of the way it was constructed. You know, that's, if they had done it, they probably would have, you know, rather had the wall at a different location in the beginning.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
How many other facilities like this with a tenant space does Aldi have in Monroe County?
Oh, in Monroe County?
Yeah.
Boy. They, they have a couple of shared sites, um, that they had developed together. Um, I know that we did the, up in Henrietta, we did the Tim Hortons and that one, that was actually kind of jointly done at the same time. I'm trying to think of anything. I know they have one in Syracuse that's, uh, they had done a development there that they've got a facility, I think it's in, yeah, right in Camillus. Um, they have done them at, at different times, um, but all of those are internal tenant walls. They're, you know, it wasn't a, a unique, you know, requirement like it is here.
Just as a point of clarification, I was asking, those were joint, um, development packages and not the same shared building, correct? I know the one in Henrietta, I, I know Tim Hortons very well.
Yeah, they were-
They are separate buildings.
They are separate buildings, yes, they are. But Camillus is not. Camillus is a, uh, I, I want to, I think that was an old Grossman's that they purchased the building, and they do have tenant space in that one. But there was an existing building that they took over. They are in a couple plazas where they have taken additional tenant space next to them, but that's, they lease in that case. They, they prefer to own, um, but, and they have been forced in certain markets to, you know, fall into plazas.
Any other questions or comments from the board? All right, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of the application?
Mr. Chairman.
Do you want to speak in favor of the application, or in opposition, or just talk?
I want information first.
Step up, identify yourself with your address.
Kevin Monroe Bills.
Not, not for Channel Ten, they're not here for this, I don't think.
Kevin Monroe Bills, Thirty-four Dulceide Road.
I'm definitely impacted on this side, because Aldi's is here. Everybody likes Aldi's, everybody likes Wegmans. My question is, are they expanding the building, or are they just going to go to the existing space?
Just the existing space is my understanding.
It's a firewall, you say, right?
Correct. They would remove the firewall and move-
You'd make a breach in the firewall.
Excuse me, I'm just going to ask the applicant to grab the mo, uh, the handheld mic if you're going to answer the question, so that folks viewing at home, there's one on the podium.
If you want, I can just wait until you're done.
Yeah, make a breach in the firewall, correct?
You can ask me to answer whatever you'd like. I, I really got to, I'll, I'll go to the-
My understanding is, of the application is, and the applicant will tell me if I'm wrong, they're going to take down the wall that made it between two buildings, and they're going to expand into the existing space, and they're not expanding outwardly from the existing footprint in any way.
Ask your questions to the chairman.
There is, there's no intent to change the footprint of the overall building.
Right. Who owns the other side of the building, then? Why is it like a twenty-one hundred square feet expansion?
Aldi owns the entire site. You can, you can have multiple buildings on a site and still be owned.
So there'll be no footprint at all that expands anything that would you already have sitting there?
They haven't asked, they haven't asked to expand the footprint.
Hell, I think that would be very fair for you to open the wall to make sure you can, guys can go back and forth between two buildings with the firewall. Under that question.
The firewall is not a requirement of the building code. It was a way to create a separate building, but it's not, it's not a limit because of an area requirement.
Yes, I understand that, sir.
It's a sprinklered building, it's not a, it's not a fire requirement.
Okay, I understand. So I'm in favor for that.
Okay.
As long as it doesn't, Mr. Chairman, I'm in favor of that, as long as it didn't change the footprint around.
Okay.
My only thing I have to say, I do have one more thing to say, okay? You expect more traffic, which is fine. As a resident here on this side of that divide, I would appreciate some more recourse from us, we have it, Denny Wegman, to have a little garbage picked up here and there. So that's just up to you.
I'd be happy to pass on all of your comments to, to Aldi. Uh, I mean, I, I'm an engineer, so-
I understand, I know what you want to do. You're not expanding this building, it's not going anywhere than it is. All you want to do is open a breach in the wall to have more traffic come in.
Is that correct? Correct. The tenant space was included in the traffic.
Thank you, sir. That's all I have to, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you.
I'm in favor.
Anyone else who wants to speak in favor of the application? Anyone else in favor of the application? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the application?
My name is Ann Burns, and I'm co-chair of Helping Arundacore Plan for Progress. The HIP group has been the steward of the renaissance of the Titus Cooper Hudson neighborhood for the last twenty years. Um, to give some background, which has been shared here, we were also here three years ago when Aldi's came in with their plan. And the thing that is different about this district is it is not a standard C commercial district. So it is mixed-use commercial. A building of this size, fifteen thousand square foot, even with the bonuses that were given, is actually a prohibited use in this district. We really wanted to, we weren't opposed to Aldi's, and we still are not opposed to Aldi's being there. Um, it's been a popular, um, destination in the town, they've been very successful. Um, our problem is with the code and the interpretation of the code, um, and that wall, and we knew this was going to happen, that tenant space is now going to be taken over by Aldi. And then you're left with three thousand and change square feet, and that's going to be taken over. So it just keeps sort of smacking the mixed-use code, which we all worked so hard to pull together, that really makes this district happen, is going to be negated. So that being said-
I'm, I'm sorry, can you, can you expand on that? Explain to me how, let's assume that Aldi's takes over the whole space that's there.
Yep.
Can you tell me how that affects the-
Well, it just sets a, it sets a precedent for the neighborhood, and that's-
So that if you build a big building, if we let you build, build a big building, we might let you occupy the whole thing?
The whole idea three years ago was that, the big argument was this was going to be a tenant space, and-
And let's assume that it had been rented out. Wouldn't there be more traffic there now than there is just for Aldi's?
Yeah, but it's, it's the footprint of the building is what we're looking at. Prohibited uses and footprint of the building.
That's there now, right?
It is there, because, because the zoning board, the town board, the planning board, and I gave all of you the comments, I hope you receive those-
Yep.
-all the detail from three years ago. So I wanted that background to be laid, and our opinion to be heard. That being said, if you decide you are going to approve this, we want some concessions made, and these are external to the building, because as the gentleman who just came up here before I did said, trash is a huge issue. That swale that was built on the west side of the property just collects trash. So that needs to be brought back to ground level, which was the original site plan, it was supposed to be at ground level. The, uh, the shrubbery that's there is half-dead. There needs to be new, new plantings put in, the trees transplanted, a- put in, the trees transplanted, a water source put on the external part of the building so that landscaping can be watered. Part of the problem, we had a drought last summer, and shrubs were not watered, so they died. So we would like the stormwater management. We know that that was put there for a reason, but put the pipe in, fill that in, replant it so that it doesn't collect, collect the trash that it does now. The lighting, the colonial light poles that were asked for by the community three years ago, they've put three-foot concrete bases with nine-foot poles on top of those. It looks awful. So there's four or five of those. We're asking that the concrete bases be removed and legitimate colonial poles that are 12 feet tall be put in there, not just sitting on top of those concrete bases. The, it will just improve the appearance of the building. So, that in addition to the water source, that's what we're asking for this evening. We appreciate your comprehensive review of this application. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak in opposition to the application? If so, step right up.
Hi, Mr. Bills, how are you?
I'm good.
Good.
Which one? This one?
That one.
I'm Sandra Bills. I live at 34 Dale Side Road. My house is closest to Aldi's, along with my neighbor. We both have a dead end, we live on a dead end street, so both houses are there. Excuse me, when Aldi's first moved in, and we went through all this whole ordeal, because I was at all the meetings, the trucks, they said the trucks would not be coming. They come at 2:00 in the morning, they come at 4:00 in the morning, they come at 6:00 in the morning, and when they come with the garbage pickup, that starts at 6:00 in the morning. It's, in the winter, it's not too bad, because you got your doors closed, but in the summer, it's horrible. It just says I was leaving, the trucks were back. And when they have the refrigerated trucks, the truck driver gets out of the truck, and the refrigerator truck runs all night long. As far as the creek goes, it's on the side of the house. People that come to Aldi's, and I shop at Aldi's, I go to Wegmans as well, but as they come around the corner, they open up the doors of their cars and take the trash and throw it over the side. The creek is filling up with trash, and this could block all the water supply that's existing. I went up to the town last year and asked them to come and take pictures so they could see what we were up against. They came on Aldi's side, they need to come on our side to take the pictures, because there's no trash, because my son goes out into the woods and he picks up the trash at our side. So something needs to be done. As far as the building going bigger, using that existing space, I suggest that I would like to see some sort of a wall put in, along with, they would also cut down on the sound, it would also cut down on the trash that comes over the side.
Where would you want a wall?
On the side where.
You mean like between your house and the parking lot somewhere?
Yeah, that would be fine. Like, here is, here's my house, here's my neighbor's house, here's the creek, here's Aldi's, right across this way.
I checked with our attorney a minute ago, and when we're dealing with an area variance, conditions relating to the outside and the exterior, like filling in things and putting up walls, are not conditions that we can put on an area variance that deals with interior space. If, but those are concerns that the town can take up, and Aldi's can take up, and maybe the town and Aldi's working together with neighborhood groups and neighbors can arrive at a solution. It might not need to be a wall, it could be a fence that would catch the trash.
Right, right.
And keep it from coming over to your side. But I don't know what, as a condition of a variance, if we're inclined to grant it, that's not something that properly we can do.
Okay, who owns the property that's by the dentist office? The gray house that sits there? Who's the owner where the sign is?
I don't know that, but if you check with the town assessor's office, they could tell you who owns every.
Piece of property that's there?
In the entire town.
Okay, because the grass is that high?
That's, again, I'm not sure, but if you check with the town, they'll tell you, and then.
Okay.
If you talk to the building and planning department, right?
Well, and actually, I would say if you have a complaint about either tall grass or refuse on a property, certainly call the code enforcement office. And even if it's something that you've brought up in the past, certainly feel free to call again if the issues resurface so that it can be an active code enforcement action.
Okay, wouldn't, when the town did come, they went on the wrong side of the street?
Okay, so then you would indicate that to code enforcement staff so they could come and take a look from the, maybe perhaps from your property or from another vantage point. Well, certainly, code enforcement can handle that and any other code-related issues.
What about the truck noise that we hear?
Just as a practical matter, instead of having the town come out to take the pictures on the wrong side, take the pictures yourself on the right side.
We did.
Actually, I'm sorry, Chairman, I'm just going to correct that for the record so that, we need code enforcement to actually go out and take their own photos, so that if they, for the purposes of future court appearances and such, they have to rely on their own evidence.
That's fine.
Okay, is there anything that we could do for the noise that's at night?
It's.
At 2:00, at 4:00?
Arundicate does have a noise ordinance, and again, it's a code enforcement issue that I believe the police department enforces.
Okay, because I know I went to talk to the store manager that's at Aldi's, and he's a wonderful man, and what they were doing is they were bringing in the truck at 10:00 at night until 2:00 in the morning, because once a week, they have to wash the floors inside of Wegmans. So, and the truck goes, and the pumps are going, and you can hear this.
You mean Aldi's?
Yes, in Aldi's. So I took the time to go over to talk to him, and he was nice enough to say, well, we could take this truck, and we can put it in front of the store, which will cut down on some of the noise, which he did, and I don't hear that.
Okay.
But it's the noise of the trucks that come, and they, they sit there all night, and they're, I don't know if anybody's in the store or not. I understand they have to have deliveries, but when they first, when we first talked about Aldi's coming into that area, they said the store would close at 9:00. They also said there'd be no deliveries through the night, it would be quiet. And that hasn't happened.
Well, that, as Mr. Rupson suggested, that might be another code enforcement issue in respect to the noise ordinance.
Fine, I'll go to them. And they're right at the town?
Yeah.
Okay, super. Thank you.
They're right here. Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
Anyone else here to speak? I think we're in opposition to the application, right? I thought she was coming to speak. Anyone here who'd like to talk to us about walls, interior space, Aldi's expansion, whatever? Mr. Bills, we heard from you already. You get one chance.
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, board.
You're welcome. Good night.
Good night.
All right, did you want to respond, Denny?
Yeah, there's a couple of things. First of all, the swale on the west side of the building is part of the stormwater criteria that was required, the new water quality regulations. The state of New York has complied with, well, throughout the country, they have started to implement these, but that area has to be almost like a marsh area. There's certain soil criteria that goes in there. If you go onto DEC's website, you guys can learn all about how to design and build those, but there's nothing that you can do that, that meets the criteria for the DEC regulations, the size, the soils, the way the water infiltrates into the ground. All of that is by water quality standards, you know, established by the DEC. So it's not like we can just go fill that in and get rid of it, because we'd no longer be in compliance. Regarding the trucks, I'm puzzled, because I've been working with Aldi for over 20 years, and they're distribution centers out of Tully, New York, and the way they work is their trucks come, their drivers take the material off the back of the truck with their, themselves, take it and put it into that back storage area. Their storage area is set up with a pallet area, where actually our company is the National Architects Forum, so I know a lot about how this operates. They take that material off, put it into pallets, and then they take that truck and they're gone. So as fast as that driver can get the pallets off, he's off back to the, the, you know, to the Tully, to the distribution center. So, the idea that they're sitting there for hours on end is baffling to me. I, I don't know if they're picking up noises from, you know, across the road, but that's not, you know, unless something's happening at this store that's unique to anywhere else, I'm not aware of how that would be occurring, because he'd have to be going in there and taking a nap, which they monitor these things all by satellites. So, I mean, they, they really are pretty fine-tuned in how they go and, and establish and make deliveries fairly quickly. At night, I know that they try very hard to make their deliveries by 10:00. Sometimes they do get where they run into traffic along the throughway, they run into problems, mechanical issues. Sometimes, while they're making a delivery at one store, they run into a problem and they get delayed. I, I can't speak to that, that would never happen. I don't know how often it's happened, but I will take that back to Aldi and make sure that they're aware that that's a complaint, because that is something that we did talk about in the original, and I think it is important to relay that to them. I think those were the items that I picked up on regarding that, but you also brought up that the traffic from the tenant spaces, that was included in the traffic study originally. So that, us moving into that really doesn't have an impact on the original traffic study that was performed.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll close the hearing with respect to that matter and move on to the next item on the agenda, which must be the one that the majority of people are here about.
Yeah, ZB, ZB 1707-5, upon the matter of request by Thornton Engineering, acting as agent for Capstone Real Estate Development LLC, for area variances to convert an existing three-story building into a 27-unit residential dwelling with less than required rear and side setbacks, and with less than required parking and exceeding maximum permitted lock coverage and height, on premises 453 St. Paul Boulevard, also known as 41 Colebrook Drive, in an R1 residential district.
I'm sorry. Good evening. I'm Don Lasher from Capstone Real Estate Development. With me is Glenn Thornton from Thornton Engineering. We're here.
Both raise your right hands. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
You do.
Okay, thank you.
We're here tonight seeking area variances for the former St. Thomas the Apostle School located at 41 Colebrook Street. Before we start with the specific variances, I thought I would give a little background on our project. As you may or may not know, the St. Thomas School closed in 1992, was vacant for several years until I believe 1994, when Steppingstone's Learning Center moved in and occupied the building for approximately 20 years. The school has been vacant since October or November of 2014, and since that time, it has been available for sale or lease and has been on the market. We are proposing to convert the school into approximately 27 market-rate residential apartments. Not afford, there's some confusion about what market rate means, but they are not affordable, they are not subsidized, they're not senior housing. It's market rate, open to anyone. Our intent, or our goal, is to have a variety of apartments. As you've probably seen from our floor plans, we've got units ranging between 800 square feet and 1,100 square feet. There are nine units proposed per floor. Our intent is to keep the common hallways and utilize what were formerly classrooms and convert those classrooms into apartments. Our site plan, before Glenn gets into the details, our site plan is pretty simple. We're not proposing improvements to the site or changes, modifications to the site. Our intent is to remove the small playground along the east side of the property, create green space there. We'll leave the existing access for ingress and egress from the three streets that service the site. We have easements, or proposed easements in place with the cellar, and we are looking, or we have a shared parking easement that we would incorporate into the project with some designated spaces adjacent to the entrance to the building and some common spaces within the existing parking lot. We're currently looking at our utilities that service the building. We recognize that we may need to separate some of those utilities. We believe that the gas, electric, and water are currently separated and are adequately sized for our proposed use, but we are working with the service providers to determine that. Our plans for the building exterior are just to replace the existing window openings with new windows, replace the entrance doors, remove the exterior lighting, and change it out with LED dark sky compliant fixtures. At our planning board meeting in June, the planning board inquired about our HVAC units, so we have selected what are typically a residential unit, like you would have at your home, and we are locate, planning to locate those in the center of the roof so that they're not visible from the street, from our neighbors, they're quiet. We're also, Glenn, if you wouldn't mind, looking at, flipping to some of the renderings. These are samples of projects or what the spaces could look like, but our intent is to abate and perform the interior demolition that's required in the building, open the spaces up, open the ceilings back up, open the columns up, open the exterior walls up. Not 100% sure what you'll find when you start a project like this, so, you know, a couple of the photos will show exposed brick exterior walls. Some show higher ceilings, some show exposed columns. Our intent is to open the space up as much as possible and let in as much natural light as we can. Our rent, well, it's part of the process of the abate, is to complete the abatement and demolition before we can start the renovation work, and then we would need to add a new elevator to the building in addition to the windows, doors, and the construction of the apartments. Our rents for the units will range from approximately $1,200 to $1,500 a month, depending on the size of the units. So it's probably at the higher end of the market rate, but we've, that's where we are today based on our anticipated construction costs and estimates looking forward. My firm, Capstone Real Estate Development, is the developer of the project. My other firm, which is Capstone Construction Services, would be the general contractor for the project. We perform our own work, we subcontract a lot of work, but we manage our own projects. We would do the same on this project. When the construction is complete or during that construction phase, we would turn it back over to the real estate development side of things, where we would lease up and manage and finance our own buildings. We do everything in-house, we don't subcontract anything out. It allows us to keep better control of our projects, not only on schedule and budget, but also on lease up and maintenance going forward for the next 20, 30 years, however long it may be. Unless there are any questions, I'd like to turn it over to Glenn to discuss the variances that are required and that we're seeking today.
Just, you might want to turn some of those photos toward the audience, because I guarantee they're dying to see, see what they might look like.
You could prop them up in front of us here, if you'd like.
Thank you, this is a public hearing after all.
Well, I know, but I just want you to see it.
Enough, everybody, you'll have your chance to come up to the podium.
Switch with you down, switch with the mic, that's it.
Thanks, Gary. Good evening. I'm Glenn Thornton with Thornton Engineering, the engineer for the applicant. The reason we're here tonight, we're requesting a number of area variances for the, for the proposed 27-unit apartment building. All of the variances are necessary because of the existing layout of the site. All of the variances are necessary because of the existing layout of the site and the property that the, the church is willing to sell to us. Number one would be the, the parking variance. By code, two parking spaces are required for each unit, each apartment unit. 27 units requires 54 parking spaces. None of the parking spaces will be within the apartment parcel, which is, will be created by subdivision. The 54 spaces will be within the existing parking lot on-site. There will be no additional pavement constructed, no green space removed. We're going to use a number of the spaces on the church property that are currently unnecessary to sustain the church's operation. Many of the parking spaces will be dedicated to the apartment units. They will be close to the subdivided parcel and the three-story apartment building. The remainder of the parking spaces will be towards the southeast corner of the, the parking lot so that the, the churchgoers will have the more convenient spaces closer to the church. Now, with that being said, with the parking being off-site, another variance that is being requested is the, the lot area variance. By code, 3,000 square feet is required for each dwelling unit. With 27 dwelling units, that would be 81,000 square feet. Our property is less than one acre, it's 41,425 square feet. That variance request seems substantial until you factor in that we don't have any parking on the site. So, we still have significant green space within our parcel, and subtracting out the needs to provide parking on the site, what we're providing for square foot area of living area seems appropriate and not overuse of the site. The other variances are really created by the parcel line that is being created by subdivision. We'll have a deficient rear setback, a deficient side setback, just because the buildings are connected. And the, and the last variance being requested is the building height. The existing building is about 35 feet tall, code allows 30 feet. We're not changing the height of the building in any way, we're not moving, adjusting the building, adding to the building in any way. So, the other variance requests are just due to where the, the new lot line will be placed within the site.
Any questions or comments from the board?
You will have an easement agreement with the church?
Yes.
Has the parcel been subdivided?
It has not. We're, we're undergoing that process now.
And in connection with that, will there be a use or an easement that will be put in place with the subdivision documents?
Yes, there definitely will be for the parking. There will be an access easement. The church would like to have access through the parcel still for church members, and as Don stated, with the, the utilities, our plan is to separate all the utilities. Some of the utilities are already separated, there's separate utilities serving the school building. We're still investigating the drainage issue. We don't plan to change the routing of the drainage through the, the entire church property. So, there will be a need, or there might be a need, for drainage easements between the two parties as well to maintain the existing drainage system.
Do you know, is that building sewed out to Culbrook, or does it sewer out to St. Paul?
We're trying to find that out. We've, Chris did a nice job doing some investigating for us, and he said he'd be more than willing to help us either smoke test or dye test the sewers to actually determine if they are routed out. We think they're routed out to Culbrook.
Logic says it is, but a lot of those older buildings, it's hard to find out where they go.
Yeah.
Another question about the buildings, are you going to physically separate your building from the church?
Our intent is not to separate them. We will need to construct a firewall, but it, it's a nice exit and ingress egress door for us as well as for the church. Our intent is to leave the connection there and just separate the two.
So, you'd be using the church as egress?
No, there's actually a door on ours, there's a set of doors there.
Okay, on that, on that side there.
On the connector, yeah. So, there's a pair of doors facing the apartment.
But you'll have a firewall between the two.
Yeah, we'll have to obviously make it code compliant, but yes.
And then the other question I have is, you're going to have onsite maintenance personnel, or how's maintenance going to be handled?
So, either onsite or staff. We have a service now, we can provide 24/7 coverage for our properties. So, we have a service. I don't think the project's big enough to deserve a full-time staff onsite.
I understand from the part of this that we took up at the beginning of the meeting that there, that you've been in front of the planning board. And you, now you're here in front of us, but the town board is going to be the lead agency for SEACER, and they're going to do the SEACER determination, and there's a rezoning application in, in front of them, right? So, I, I guess my question is, are we premature tonight? Because if it's not rezoned to allow the apartment building, then an area variance doesn't help you at all from us, right?
Excuse me, Chairman, may I chime in just with the process? So, the application required approvals from three of the boards here, the three boards here in the town, town board, planning board, and zoning board. The public hearing is being taken up tonight. However, no decision can be made because the SEACER, and for anybody who isn't familiar with that terminology, it's the State Environmental Quality Review Act, which is required by New York state law for certain project types or certain actions. This is one of them, that SEACER is going to be handled in a coordinated review, which is why this board granted consent for the town board to serve as lead agent. Until SEACER is, the SEACER process and SEACER review is concluded, none of the boards can actually deliberate and make a decision on the application before them. And so, the public hearing tonight, there will be no decision at this level, and certainly the town board will continue on their task of reviewing the environmental impacts and closing SEACER. They were, they haven't yet declared themselves lead agency. We expect that to happen at the meeting on July 18th. That's the regular town board meeting. That's also the same night that the public hearing is scheduled for the rezoning application that's before them. And so, it's likely or possible that the order of decision now, from this point forward, would follow, so even though the public hearing is being held before the town board takes up the rezoning application officially, that this board may not be revisited until those other decisions have been rendered, if that is necessary.
Okay. I, I was just, I figured since SEACER hadn't been done that we wouldn't be making a decision tonight, but I just want to clarify that I don't think.
This application.
Be making a decision until after and if.
Correct. And you wouldn't, this application won't come back before this board?
For a while.
Oh, and, depends on how the decision goes at the town, town board level.
If at all, yes. Okay, all right. Okay.
So, we are still going to.
Well, all these people are here, we're going to do the hearing.
Okay, so our questions, our questions on the parking, our questions on the setbacks are to be asked tonight and answered, and then we're just going to leave it in limbo after everybody gives us their thoughts and opinions on it.
Well, we can't make a decision. So, I'd say since we're here, we might as well, and they're here, and the public is all here.
All right.
Let's ask the questions and get the information.
That being said, I got, the question about parking, there's two, there's one big lot, but it's divided in two. And it isn't, where are your parking spots going to be? Are they going to be next to the building, or are they going to be back where the basketball courts used to be?
So, we have two areas designated on the site plan. First is on the southeast corner of the school building, just beneath where it says proposed Lot 2 area. There's a easement there from what would become Lot 1 to Lot 2 for the parking.
So, there's just two rows of cars there?
There's 27 designated spaces there.
I got 21.
Excuse me, 21. The other 27 are in the back, I apologize. So, there's 21 designated spaces there. We have 27 one-bedroom units proposed for the facility. The other 27 spaces are to be shared at the southeast corner of the parcel, that parked the back of the parking lot, in common.
So, all the way, all the way to the south part of the property?
Correct.
Is it going to be the back row of cars, is it going to be?
It's in common. During the week, you know, the parking requirements or needs on the site aren't that great, so, you know, we anticipate they'll park closer to the building, and then we'll sign those parking spaces or issue tags so we can monitor who's parking where.
It seems like it could be awkward.
It could be. It'll take some work between ourselves and our neighbor to work through that, but, you know.
Well, the other, the other part of the problem is, is if you're the guy that comes in late and doesn't get a parking spot the first 21 next to the building, you're walking, trying to figure out how many feet away.
24?
No, more than 24. You're talking 100, 100-plus feet to, to.
Could be.
In the wintertime with groceries to get into your apartment?
It could be.
That two-story brick building to the southeast, does that also use that parking lot?
I believe so, but I can't speak for the seller.
Yeah, that's the old rectory.
Yeah, I believe so.
Convent or rectory.
Has, has the staff reviewed, has the staff reviewed this to make sure there's adequate parking? I mean, there's, you got, you got three different uses that are going to share the same parking lot.
It, it has been, it has been reviewed.
Okay.
Looking at your, at your apartment layout, on the, on the three different floors, they look like they're all single-bedroom apartments?
Correct, they're one-bedroom units.
And, and the square footage of the center ones?
Range, so, the ones on the east or, east and west side of the common hallway, which runs from Culbrook to the south, are approximately 800 to 900 square feet, depending on where those demising walls land on windows. The three along the south side of the building are between 1,000 and 1,200 square feet, or almost 1,100 square feet and 1,200 square feet.
Well, I was just doing rough calculations, they don't look that big.
They are 30, so the first one on the, let's call it the west side of the building before the T, that hallway that runs perpendicular to, or parallel to Culbrook, the first one there is, I believe, 35 by 26.
That's the south, south end, the three, three.
No, the three on the end are, are slightly bigger.
All right, so go back up to the, the center. The two, the two on each side closest to Culbrook are how big?
Almost 900 square feet, 850, 860.
And just for the Boyd's information, in the R5 zoning, which is what this application is, we're using as the way to calculate the variances required because they are seeking the rezoning from the town board, the minimum livable floor area for a dwelling unit for a one-bedroom needs to be 480 square feet, in case, that's helpful to know for the, for the board's preference information.
And these all meet that?
Yeah, these all meet and exceed in most cases, they more than double the, the minimum. And then there's, in R5, the, that's the, the smallest unit you can have, and it specifies the minimum would increase per bedroom, you have to add another level, another amount of square footage for additional bedrooms. But that's the, the base requirement for this zoning district.
Okay, I have a question about fire. I see three egress exit entrances, so that's, that's how the fire trucks would get in there, obviously. There's no, no other way, right?
There's no other way, correct.
Okay, has there been any kind of a study done as far as water supply?
We are looking into that and researching, is it Monroe County, Glenn? With Monroe County Water Authority to see the size that exists today. But we may need to increase the size of the water service for the building.
Especially on some of these older buildings, it's.
Yeah, we, our intent is to sprinkler the building and provide domestic water service to, off one line from the street, so we would split it into our fire protection service as well.
Would there be a standpipe?
Most likely in the stair towers, yep.
And is the building going to be sprinkled?
Fully.
Okay. How about, well, we, we just went through this on the Culver Road Apartments, and it was a lot of discussion about getting fire trucks close enough to the building to be effective as far as rescue is concerned, and.
A ladder truck?
A ladder truck. A ladder truck should, should be able to handle this, right?
From Culbrook, depending on where the trees are, I can't speak to that today. And from the parking lot at the back of the building, yeah. The access, fire access roads, or the roads are actually designed that way so the parking's far enough away from the building to get the trucks there.
And as part of the site plan and subdivision review that the planning board's undertaking, they'll certainly take a look at that, and our fire marshal, and actually the, the fire department chief will review the application and identify anything they need, if, if that's needed, during the site plan and subdivision review.
Are we going to hear from them? Like we did on the other day, are we going to have a?
In this instance, because it's an existing building, I, I'm not sure that the, we certainly can have the fire marshal there, share their memo with all the boards, for sure, absolutely.
Because I do think the input that we had towards the fire department when we were doing the Culver Road Apartments down St. Salons.
Mm-hmm.
Was a big benefit, not only to us, but for the, basically the hall viewing audience. If they're going to have people living there, can we get them out? You know, and that's, that's a biggie, that's got to be done.
The fire marshal and, and the chief of the district will review the plans, and the fire marshal will certainly prepare a memo, and typically they'll, with the current, the code change, they typically will review the application together and submit a memo in response to the project.
I guess that's my problem. I think we need more than submitting a memo. I think we need people to come in, when you do a renovation like this, and explain things, how they're going to be set up, and have a chance for us to ask questions. I mean, you know, it's fine to say, yeah, they met, they figured it all out, let's go. Well, this doesn't give us a whole lot of information, and as a board member, I would like to have that kind of information.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a reason there's, there's no two-bedroom apartments?
Just the way the, the existing hallways are from this, when it was a school, when it was originally built in 1926, the hallways on the, all three floors actually are load-bearing. So, relocating them structurally is difficult, and even the ones that demised the classrooms on the north side of that, on the north end of the building, it's difficult to move those. So, our intent was to keep them where they were, and it just happens the layout that that 900 square foot, you know, on average, is kind of a sweet spot for us from a rental Not to say that when we start the pro, I'm sorry, it's not to say that when we start the process, we open the building up, that we don't discover, you know, a wall is not load-bearing and we can't combine one, but right now it, it doesn't look that way.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
I find it hard to believe that people are going to want to walk that far from the parking lot to their apartment.
We have a lot of walk-up units like that, that are on street parking only, and where we don't have parking, among other projects that we've developed.
Right.
Both in the city and out of the city, and it's, we haven't had an issue, people adjust to it.
Did you develop any of the projects in Buffalo that took old schools and turned them into one-bedroom apartments?
I did not do anything in Buffalo.
Because. The ones in Buffalo have only off-street parking, I mean, on-street parking.
Any other questions or comments from the board? All right, we're going to open it up to the public hearing. Before we open that up, I want to just clarify something for everyone who's here. As you've heard, we're not making a decision tonight because right now, this is in an R1 residential district, and the applicant is asking the town board to rezon it and allow it to be in an R5 residential district. So, the question of the variances doesn't come up unless and until the town board grants that application, and it, and we have nothing to do with that. Then, it would go to the planning board. Then, it would go to the planning board for site plan approval, right?
I'll have to look at the, the schedule, but my, my guess would be that it would be taken off the table at the planning board level first, in terms of order of operation and the way the meetings generally occur and timing takes place. If that were to be the case, then planning board would likely be the first one to be able to take the table item off the table and deliberate on the item before them. And then, this board would more than likely be, uh, the last to address the applications before them.
And so the question before us tonight and in the future is not whether or not it should be rezoned, is not whether or not apartments, uh, in that area are appropriate or not, and I know a lot of you have, I'm sure, have feelings about that, but it's the question of if they do it, can we, should we give them the variances from setbacks, which are all distances from boundary lines and things of that nature, that would be pretty much put in place because of the existing building and the town, or the diocese, what the diocese is willing to sell you? So if the town requires a 30-feet setback under the code, and I'm being told that these are all from the R5, but the building is existing, so the question before us would be, is it a practical hardship to give less than what it's required and make them knock down a wall and move a wall back the right number of feet, or because the building is existing to leave it there? So those are the issues that we have that are involved in this process. And if your, if your opposition is to apartments, that goes to the town board on July 18th?
It's next Tuesday, the, the. July 18th, Tuesday, the public hearings don't begin at the town board until 7:35. The meeting itself begins at 7:00 PM. The town board will take up actions or items on their regular agenda, and at 7:35, they stop the regular agenda so they can carry, take out the, take on the public hearings. There are a couple scheduled that evening, this one being the first.
So it's similar to the chicken thing that we had earlier? It, it's not up to us to decide whether chickens are appropriate in Arondequoyt, it's up to us to decide what the conditions are. Here, the issue is not, should this be apartments, should it not be apartments? The issue in front of us is, do they have to move a wall in order to, to do it? You'll have your chance, everyone will have their chance. All right, so we're gonna open it up to the public input portion, and first I'll call on those who wish to speak in favor of the project. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the project? Well?
Good evening, I'm Joe Kelly, I live at 10 Eventide Lane. Uh, I've been a lifelong resident of Arondequoyt, aside from several years, years in the military, and just raised a few blocks from St. Thomas. And though, all I can anticipate and understand concerns people will probably express about when developments move into a, a beautiful neighborhood, and it is a beautiful neighborhood. I do today stand in support for this particular proposal for a few brief reasons. Uh, one is the reality that there is a building unoccupied, uh, and at something, at some point, something substantial needs to be done, uh, of quality. And the longer it sits, uh, the more troublesome issues could occur, whether that be vandalism, whatever that might be.
There's not gonna be, excuse me. As I said at the beginning of the meeting, you'll have your chance to call to the podium and say what you wish to say with respect to the issue. When there's a person standing at the podium, only ones who are allowed to interrupt them are the members of the board. If you're sitting out there and you feel an urgent need to interrupt the speaker, leave and say whatever you wanna say outside, and then you can come back. But we're not gonna have any undercurrent, we're not gonna have any disruptive behaviors. We're not gonna put up with that. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, second point is, uh, many lifelong residents of Arondequoyt, and I could be one of them, desire to spend their entire lives in this town, um, and may consider whether or not maintaining a larger house or property is practical. So maybe having the option of quality apartments could keep more of our friends and neighbors in this community. Our third, my third reason is a member of the St. Cattery Parish, I am proud of the many ministries that serve this community for both parishioners and non-parishioners. And I would rather see the financial resources that we're now pouring into a vacant building used to benefit our whole community versus, uh, maintaining this vacant building. Fourth, uh, just an observation, whether it's right or wrong, I don't know, but certainly stepping stones, the former stepping stones was a large operation, I was very familiar with it, large preschool and daycare operation, I would, certainly saw a lot of significant busing in and out. I don't know whether or not that was an issue at the time for the neighborhood, I never heard issues, uh, in my rounds through the neighborhoods. But I would hope that this apartment, uh, the way it's designed and the parking limitations, hopefully would not cause any disruptions that have not already been there in the past. So, uh, so I do see this, uh, as a positive element for our town. And if anybody would like to talk to me, I'll be in the parking lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of the application?
Ken Fettinger, 119 Hillhurst Lane. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm here tonight to express total support for the rezoning of the premises at 41 Colebrook Drive, in order to allow Capstone Real Estate Development to convert this building into 27 market-rate apartments. My wife and I have been residents of Arondequoyt since 1986, and wish to remain so in the future years as empty nesters, downsizing our residential requirements in the process. Without projects such as the one being presented this evening, those plans may not be feasible. This subject is addressed in the 2014 Comprehensive Master Plan of the Town of Arondequoyt in several sections. In section 2-17, it notes, quote, "Local real estate professionals identify Arondequoyt as a very affordable market. One professional offered that 30% of Arondequoyt's residential real estate market is comprised of retirees, many of whom wish to downsize and remain in-town, but are unable to find desired or suitable residential options." Figure 2.4 in the same document indicates by means of a bar chart that reflects U.S. Census data that between the year 2000 and 2010, the 55 to 64-year-old population rose from 8.9% of total town population to 14.2%, the largest percentage increase for any age group during that period. Section 3-4 of the master plan lists among the primary goals for maintaining healthy neighborhoods is to, quote, "Encourage a wide range of residential living opportunities for residents of all ages and income levels." Again, in section 3-7 of the plan, under the directive of, quote, "Enhance housing opportunities for seniors," it is noted that, quote, "Arondequoyt has an aging population base. Currently, seniors have limited retirement housing options in-town. As a result, many choose to remain in their home, while others choose to move to modern alternative housing outside of Arondequoyt. To my mind, this is a loss of population to which Arondequoyt should not be subjected." Finally, under that same section, the directive further states, quote, "Explore zoning incentives to encourage rehabilitation and new construction of housing attractive to seniors. Incentives may include density bonuses, infrastructure assistance, tax abatement, et cetera. High-quality design and material should be required to ensure new housing will add value to the areas where it is located and will retain its value over time. I see this as a direct charge to this board to implement." In conclusion, I ask that this board exercise due diligence in considering all of this information and approving this rezoning request. Residents of the, residents in the post-retirement slash empty nest category, including my wife and I, want to be assured of being able to seriously consider these apartments as our next place of residence. Thank you, gentlemen.
Sir, I wanna, I do wanna thank you for your comments, but I just wanna echo what the chairman said. The issue of zoning, the rezoning, we have nothing to do with that. So, appreciate your comments, they were very concise, they were very well stated, but so everyone knows, we have nothing to do with the rezoning issue whatsoever.
Understood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none? Is there anyone here that wishes to speak? I'm sorry.
Good evening. My name is Mary Fran Fettinger, and I also live at 119 Hillhurst Lane. I'm speaking in, uh, speaking tonight in support of the application before you. I understand that this isn't the board, but I, I want a, a lot of people to hear what I have to say. I'm here in three capacities. First, as a neighbor. Second, as an empty nester, who, when it comes time to downsize, doesn't wanna leave the town. There are very few choices, and I am afraid that when I wanted downsize, I would have to leave. And I see myself as an, uh, Arondequoyt resident for a lifetime. Lastly, I speak as vice chair of the St. Cattery Parish Pastoral Council.
Enough? I don't wanna hear anymore of that kind of disruptive behavior. If it's going to happen again, I'm going to have everybody leave and stand out in the hall, and you can come in one at a time and address your comments to the board, and you can be heard and you won't be disrupted. So I've, this is the third time, I think, that I've had to say something. I'm not going to be just giving out a warning again. So, that's enough. If you don't think that you can contain yourself, this would be the time for you to leave the room. I'm sorry for the interruption, go ahead.
It's okay, thank you. The Pastoral Council is an advisory group to our pastor, Father Paul English. In that role, I would like to read some excerpts from a letter written by Father Paul to Dave Sealy on this matter. "Mr. Sealy, the parish was formed in 2011 by the merger of five Roman Catholic parishes in Arondequoyt. The merger was motivated by the recognition that the existing structures were depleting resources intended for pastoral ministry. The plan approved by the Diocese of Rochester was that the new parish would use the sites of St. Cecilia, Christ the King, and St. Margaret Mary. Property that was no longer essential might be repurposed, sold, or demolished. We believe we are good neighbors. We continue to offer pastoral ministry to parishioners, neighbors, and friends throughout the town. We maintain a school on King's Highway, and our property is used to provide wholesome activities for children and families. Currently, the school at St. Thomas is under contract with Capstone. We were pleased to receive the offer. The building was listed for sale or lease after stepping stones vacated the premises. After over three years, no suitable tenants surfaced, and despite vigorous efforts, no charter schools or any other educational enterprise made any offer for lease or sale. The petition is motivated by the desire to divest the parish of a building that is not needed for pastoral ministry, since the parish operates a school on King's Highway and has no plans to reopen the building on Colebrook. The building has become a liability. Carrying costs alone are approximately $30,000 a year. A vacant building presents numerous problems. Vacant buildings deteriorate at an accelerated pace and often become the target of vandals. The subdivision is necessary for the sale to proceed, which will ease the burden of the parish and assist in developing financial security. It would seem that this number, this number in the building of market-rate apartments would be ideal, an ideal reuse of the building. Will it impact traffic? Certainly, the vehicles associated with the number of apartments will not create a greater burden than a school, or a daycare, or even the existing church. I would anticipate less traffic than there was when stepping stones occupied the, occupied the building. We've been working with the developer on a variety of issues pertaining to the safety of residents, visitors, and parishioners. What about the rest of the parcel? The church has been maintained for use with the celebration of the Eucharist on Sundays and holy days. The other building on-site has served as a convent, a rectory, and now parish center. No other portion of the St. Paul Boulevard property is for sale or lease, and no such action is under consideration. I hope that this is helpful as the town considers the petition. The parish should not be forced to maintain ownership of a property that has become burdensome. The anticipated use of this property by the buyer is legal and seems to be the highest and best use of this former school. Best regards, Reverend Paul English." Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to the application?
I oppose. My name is Michael Yanaga. I live at 165 Colebrook Drive. In regards to what she just said, and the last person, her husband, who, the last, at least, two out of the three people who support this, out of, I don't know, 100-plus people that are here, two out of the three have an invested financial interest in this building selling. They wanna take the cost off of them, they don't necessarily care how it affects the rest of the neighbors who are all here tonight, that their property values will diminish, the character of our neighborhood will be changed. So first of all, in regards to that, they have a financial interest. I don't think you should consider them, their opinions. You shouldn't let the voice of a few outweigh the voice of many. In addition to the seeker that you guys were talking about, you guys are looking at the environmental impact. Nobody's talking about the community impact, how the people around this feel. We are all fired up and upset about this. And I know you don't have the power tonight to stop it, you should, but you don't. So, I'm not even gonna go into that, but you need to listen to the voices of the people that this is gonna affect. There's other uses they can do to stop having the cost of maintaining a vacant building. They can tear it down, fill it in, and create a park for the children to play in. Or, there's no open available lots to build homes in Arondequoyt. I'm sure there's a lot of people, I know, my cousin's husband was looking for a place to build a home, he couldn't find one. This neighborhood was set up as all-one residential neighborhood to protect the homeowners and the community against stuff like this from happening. There are so many different variances that don't belong in our neighborhood, the laws were set up clearly against what they want. Number one, you know, apartments, people that don't own their property, don't have pride in the community, they tend to, it's statistically proven that they reduce property values, they bring transits, undesirables. There's two schools right across the street, which we've brought up many times, there's a lot of children there. What type of people are gonna be living in these apartments, you know? People, you don't know. You know, he has all these nice pictures, but I, to be honest with you, I've never seen apartments that looked that nice in my life, around here at least, you know? So, don't be fooled by their charades. You need to listen to the people that this is gonna affect when you're making your decisions. We're all against it. Nobody wants this. And we've all been here, every meeting, there's more and more people, and we're not going away. So I hope, as you make your considerations, whether or not there's enough feet, or this or that, you factor in the, how they're. or that, you factor in the, how this is going to affect us, in our opinions, because we're here to, we'll be here past midnight tonight, sharing our voices and concerns. So listen to us when you're making your decision.
I was under the impression, when I attended the board, the planning board meeting, that you would be receiving information from them about what we had stated to them. So I have printed out a sort of a summary of everything and all the issues that came out at the time pertaining to this project. So I have a copy for you, and I'd like you to read it. And it does, and none of these issues then were addressed to the builder, I mean, to the Capstone, or to anybody else.
Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Excuse me, I have a copy for you.
No, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Can you hear me well?
We can, yep.
You can. And I'm not muffled like I was before?
No, I can hear you loud and clear.
All right.
Thank you.
Aurora Shellhorn, 527 Pine Grove Avenue, Rochester, New York, 14617. I am a parishioner. I have been part of that parish from the 70s, and I attend it now, and I live on Pine Grove Avenue, which may, may not be affected by the traffic that might be generated. So I need a copy of my own. I know you do have a lot to do with building codes and variances. I looked up the word variance, and it's an official permit to do something normally prohibited by regulations, especially by building in a way, for a purpose normally prohibited by a zoning law or a building code. And that's why I think you are here, and why we're all here, to make sure the building codes are followed. I have, rather than to go through this entire thing, I want to focus on issues that don't affect you directly, but were there some major concerns that came up that day that had to do with changing the area, first of all, from R1 to R5, and then the complexes that would, the complications that would come from that decision? And then there was also major concerns about the value of the property lost, value, and would the compensation be done in reduced taxes for the homeowners that are around that area? And then the loss of residences that might have felt very happy living in this environment that was set up back there, quiet, and not have an apartment complex in their midst, move. I think that another concern was the strain on the infrastructure of the area in the, in the, with water, sewer, gas, electric, water drainage in the neighborhood. I didn't hear what you addressed to that person, but that was a main concern. And traffic, we talked about traffic, and traffic, and traffic that day. And it was asked that Capstone investigate it, and go and do a study on traffic. And I didn't hear that tonight, although I can't hear well, I didn't hear that spoken at all to them. Now, I don't know if those issues affect you, or if they're variances having to do with it, maybe not, but there's a lot of variances in, for changing the entire school. As far as this woman's remark about building a community for herself to live in, apartment, we had a very vibrant school. We had money, we would close when it was in the black. We were not allowed to go into that school when the stepping stones left. It was locked. We couldn't open up and do and use the facility at all. We rented, the Latin community rented the church, and finally, the rectory. We cleaned the church, we scrubbed it down, we fixed the water dripping that was neglected for six years, because I was in there cleaning and scrubbing it, and cleaning and watching the water drip off the ceiling that was neglected, and cleaned the rectory that was neglected. And now the school is in shambles, and now wants to be sold and made into beautiful apartments. It's a little short-sightedness now that it's all done, and I see that this particular group continues to sell out churches and make them into apartment complexes, or buildings and apartments for others, like, and I can name you what's going to come down the road. St. Cecilia's are going to show up and say, we want to rezone that into apartments. I'm sure that it's going to come. And they said they weren't going to sell the church or the rectory. The sign's been on that lawn for three years. And we have set up a community in there and said, we built a community. We had people from all over come to this Latin mass, and, and build a community with children and everything, and now, again, we are in the same boat we were when we closed the school when it was vibrant. There was money there that went and left, it's there. So, there's a lot of issues here that are complicated, and I know you have to make a decision about variances, but these variances affect the neighborhood, affect their lives, and although we are one church, I think it's important to remember that it's an R1 zone. And if you change it to an R2, and I know that's not your issue, does that allow other people to build their apartments? What if Colebrook sells their land and, behind their school, West Aranda Quay sells it and said, well, let's build apartments? And what if the church down the road says, hey, we have a vacant lot, let's build the apartments? So my question is, how far is that R2, I mean, R5? How far? How does, is it just this lot? Is it the whole area? And then everybody comes back to the, to the boards of Aranda Quay and says to you, hey, you let them do it, let us do it. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
I wouldn't be so angry, but somehow I've done this before, years and years ago when we were closed out. So here we are again. After building it up for three years, we are now responsible, if we want to keep that contract, for another three years to fix the roof.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Marie D'Amico Ramsey, this is my husband, Tom Ramsey, and we live at 116 Pine Crest Drive. We live actually at the corner of Pine Crest and Washington Avenue. We've lived there for approximately 25 years. It, just as a, first, as a procedural matters, we were at the planning board meeting, and at the end of that meeting, we were told that this matter would come up to this board, and this board would review it upon the application, upon first, a finding of whether the proposal was in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. So that was on the record. I would just ask the board, go back and review the record from the planning committee, and, and see procedurally what our expectations were tonight when we came here. Not that a decision would be made, but that, that as a threshold matter would be reviewed thoroughly before investigation into these other matters of traffic and sewer issues and all that. Secondly, as a procedural matter, I wanted to call to this board's attention that, that, at that meeting, at the planning board, the board did hear from Capstone and, from the engineers, and then, everybody that was here at that meeting spoke in opposition. Nobody spoke for the, the plan. Everybody spoke in opposition. And subsequent to their speaking in opposition, then, the board called Capstone and the engineers up again to ask them questions. The board did not allow the community to ask questions or, on the new material that was presented by Capstone. And I find that that was a procedural violation of the community's right, and it was a due process violation. I raised that with the attorney, but I wanted to preserve that for tonight, because I feel that there is a major miscommunication as to, these are public hearings. And even though the board said that it was not a substantive error, they, they, the acting chairman did acknowledge it was an error, but not a substantive error, because no decision would be made that night, nor tonight, still, it was a public hearing, the public did not have an opportunity to fully be heard, and I, and I believe that that is troubling at best. Tonight, we are here in opposition to, as you call it, in opposition to this proposal. I find it really, really, really troubling that although Capstone has, this is, I believe, their second proposal, and they've been before various components of the town board, at least two, with two proposals, and they've been before your boards multiple times, still they come today without information of how, where does a sewer eject? Are they in the sewer main on Colebrook? Are they in the water main? What is the impact of a traffic study? Have they done one? What's the access and egress for fire vehicles? What's the width of the driveways that they intend to enter and exit on Colebrook and on Washington? They, they come to a public hearing asking for numerous variances and for a change in the way that we live, in the area that we live in, without any information. And then they wonder why there's this opposition here. There's this opposition because we oppose the change of character of the neighborhood. There's opposition because people like us, that are frankly cash cows, two people that are lucky to have income, good income, and work hard, and put it all into our lawn, our landscaping, you know, our insurance, et cetera, as many people here do that care about the neighborhood and the character of it, the old-fashionedness of it, if you could say, the, the fact that it's not a cul-de-sac, the fact that there's, that there's sidewalks and kids can walk to school. That's the area that we chose to live in, that's the area that we invested, really, our life savings in. And when you talk about money, I won't be degraded by people that say, well, you're racist, you're just money hungry. First of all, that's between me and my God, who has happened to be that same God. Secondly, you need people in Aranda Quay that are going to invest in these properties like we did, in the properties that were vacant or largely vacant for half of the year. You need people that can come in and put money and willing to do that. And then, there's no, there's no apology to be made for investing in property and caring about the property that you have, and wanting to preserve that, that you have, that you have worked for for so long and built. And I'm sure that we're not the only couple that have put their hard work into their properties, and that are, are protective of the neighborhood that we've built. I would call to the board's attention that, just a couple years ago, they did approve a four-way stop sign at the corner of Colebrook and Wat, where do we live?
Pine Crest in Washington.
Pine Crest in Washington, recognizing that there is a lot of traffic there. There's frequent problems with the sewer main on Washington, and it's really irresponsible to suggest that, that Capstone be granted numerous variances without recognizing that there is some inf, history of, a long history of infrastructure problems. The people that spoke up in, in favor of this certainly do have a right to be heard, but I would note that, we live very near there, and our traffic in and out of our driveway, for example, and at that corner of Washington and Pine Crest is going to be affected. Our driveway is on Washington Avenue. And the area where the entrance or exit, or both, would be from Colebrook into the multi-unit housing, would come right near the crosswalk where the kids cross, and so would the exit and entrance on Colebrook itself. Just want to, I'll wrap this up. I understand, I understand the arguments that were made in favor of it, but with all due respect, I'm not financially responsible for the Catholic Church's problems, and I don't think that, that those fall upon the shoulders of those who want to maintain their neighborhood in the way that, I chose that neighborhood because of those characteristics and to maintain those characteristics. Thank you. Thank you for bearing with me.
Just, your, the question that arose, that rose was that there was apparently a representation at the planning board, that we would consider the change, or the character of the neighborhood. That is the first of the five factors that are relevant to determining whether or not to grant an area variance. And what I want to point out is, that's what we're dealing with here, again, is an area variance. Side setback, rear setback, the height of the building, which is already there and built. These consider, these variances only come into play if the town board decides to rezone the property to allow this. So our view of the change to the character of the neighborhood is in relation to whether or not to grant a variance for the distance between the lot line and the edge of the building. If the diocese had decided to sell a larger portion of the property, there wouldn't be a need for any variances other than the height one, which the alternative would be knocking five feet off the top of the building and making them put a new roof on it. So the, that's how the character of the neighborhood comes into play here, is in relation to what we have any authority over. The distance, it's an artificial line, the bounding line, you don't see it. How, that's what it comes into play. Not whether or not there should be apartments in the building, not whether the developer should be better prepared to answer questions about sewer and things like that. I understand that those are big concerns for all of you, and, and that's understandable. Those concerns relate to the question that's going to be in front of the town board next Tuesday night. Should the town board grant this application or not? If they don't, you, we won't be deciding anything in relation to what we're talking about tonight. And the other characters are, or, the other factors are, what are the alternatives not requiring a variance, like I alluded to with the height of the building? That if the building's 35 and the town code says 30 in that district, do we make them knock five feet off the building and put on a different roof, or do we let them have the five feet that's already there?
Plus the air conditioner units.
Yep. That's, I don't believe, I'd have to check on whether the code relates to the height, relates to including, I don't think it does include utilities on top, I think it's the roof itself. But that, again, we'd be weighing that in light of what the requirements are in terms of height and setbacks. How substantial is the request of the setback, is what is in front of us? What is the effect on the physical or environmental conditions if we grant the setback variance, or the height variance? And is the situation self-created? Those are the factors for the area variance, that we do take into account. But we do not decide whether or not this project, in terms of converting a school to apartments, is going to affect the change in the character of the neighborhood. That is what, one of many issues, I think, that's going to be in front of the town board next week, and that is where most of your opposition, I think, is probably better directed, because it, we don't have any say in that.
Of course the situation is.
I'm sorry, and with respect to the issue that apparently arose at the planning board in terms of people not being heard?
Yeah, I'd be happy to comment on that.
Well, all I want to say is that we'll stay here as long as it takes for everybody to talk to us. All I'd ask you to do is keep your comments relative to what we can do, or not do, as opposed to what somebody else that we don't have any control over can do or not do. But we'll, if we need to stay here all night, we'll stay here all night.
Of course the situation is self-created because they don't have to buy the property. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just comment for a second on the, the due process comment. At the end of the planning board public hearing, after the hearing was closed, there was a question raised about the potential rezoning and the use of the property by one of the planning board members, and some folks from the audience who had already spoken wanted to comment. And my discussion with the board at that time was that that issue was more relevant to the town board public hearing, so I'd indicated that there would be a town board public hearing, we shared that date, and we also indicated that there'd be an opportunity for folks to be heard tonight, so it was our decision not to reopen the public hearing on that basis.
Yes, yes, Count. Yeah, yes, Council, that, that was true, but there was also a leading question from a member of the board as to, to the, to the capstone, as to aren't these going to be market rates? And I object to these terms, market rates, when there's nothing given to the board or to the community as to what that rate is, and how could there be any market for it when there's no multi-unit housing there to begin with? So, so that's why it came up. We were, we were not able to be heard on that.
Excuse me. The question of whether you were able to be heard in front of the planning board is not anything that the zoning board can do anything about one way or the other. So I'm, I-
I, I understand that, Mr. Chairman.
We've got a number of people here that want to speak, and I'd like to keep it to what we can do, but certainly I don't want to go into what the planning board did or didn't do and whether it's right or wrong or-
Well-
Because I have no control over the planning board.
Well, those, those issues, I, I understand that those issues were raised by capstone. If they were inappropriate for that, they shouldn't have been carried over to this meeting by that board.
I don't know what was-
Thank you.
You're talking about.
All boards are going to hear our voice.
You're, we're going to give you a chance to be heard. That's what that you're being given. I just got done saying that you will stay here all night if we have to, to listen to what you have to say. All I'm asking that you do is keep in mind what it is that we have the ability to determine as opposed to somebody else.
Keep in mind how we feel.
Sir, I'm going to ask you to leave now.
No problem.
You've been disruptive, the type, you've been here, so leave.
If you listen to your residents.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You can listen from the hall.
What we're listening is to everyone who wants to speak, we listened to you and we didn't interrupt you. It's time for you to leave.
That's enough.
Time for me to go.
Yes, it is. Sir.
I'm John Nicholson, 40, Colebrook Drive, directly across the street. Been there for 46 years, minus four years when I first got married, bought my family's homestead from them, family's owned the property for over 100 years. Okay, I just want to, well, maybe, maybe not. Here, right now, it's looking maybe not if this goes through, my opinion. I just want to say one thing, and I'm just questioning. You say that this matters not if it's for an apartment, if it's not for this suit, but you're here for a variance. I just want to clarify one part of my mind, because at last week's meeting, which the only person I see here that was there is the deputy town attorney, that's it, okay? He's exactly the one that was saying the same thing. You addressed everyone and told everyone that this was going to be, you were sending over, we had two options. We can either disapprove and send over. I'm not trying to rehash it, but the reason why there's a lot of confusion, I feel, is he said there were two options, either be sent over as a disapprove for zoning approval to change to R5, or it could be approved tentatively with these conditions to see if it was going to be changed to R5. Correct or not?
That's incorrect.
Okay.
So what the discussion was, the planning board matter, just to be clear, was a recommendation on the rezoning. It's an advisory function, it's not an approval.
Go ahead.
And what was done at that meeting was a recommendation to the town board to rezone the property, subject to the following things being investigated, and the planning board enumerated certain things. The discussion about subsequent meetings and approvals was related to the area variance function that this board has-
Okay.
And the rezoning function that the town board has. There was no, there was no-
This is farther reaching.
I'm sorry?
It's farther reaching in this meeting, because my, my understanding-
This, this application is going to go on for many more meetings before many more boards. There's no decision being made tonight. This board's not in a position to make a decision tonight.
Right, I heard that, and I understand that. But I guess I'm a little confused on a matter then, if it doesn't matter if it's for an apartment or whatever else, why does not the, the actions that they're asking to be overlooked, such as, like the square footage per apartment, they're asking for that to be adjusted, correct?
No.
The square footage of area for the whole thing?
Not before this board.
That's not before this, that has nothing to do with, even though it's brought up.
Nope.
Okay. So right now, it's-
What was, what was brought up was that there's a requirement that for every living unit, there be a certain amount of space in the total parcel.
Correct. And that has nothing to do with-
That has nothing to do with what the size of the individual unit is.
No, no, not the size of the individual's unit, but you guys are not overseeing if that's going to be overlooked, the number, the size of the total project area minus that. Wouldn't it make sense that that would be important, that it was going to be used for an apartment?
Oh, we have.
Because the green space that's there, think about it, you have less green space for that whole area than what three of my neighbors and I have for seven, eight individuals between all the houses. You're going to put 27 apartments with a national average of, of two people per single bedroom apartment, national average, meaning some more, some less, 54 people in there with guests at one and a half.
There's two points that, that I need to make clear-
Mm-hmm.
Based on what you're indicating. And the first is, I'm not sure why we're here tonight discussing this, because it hasn't been rezoned, and we're talking about if it's rezoned, then these are the requirements, and that's what we're here, but it was put on our agenda, it was advertised for a public hearing, so we're having a public hearing.
Okay.
All right? The second thing is, if the diocese sold more of the, was willing to let go of more of the property around this than what they're apparently willing to let go of-
Mm-hmm.
The only thing that would be in front of us would be the height of the building, assuming that the town board rezones it. So it's a function of what the diocese is willing to sell to them.
And the side easement to the church.
Right. So that's, you know, and-
So you guys aren't overseeing, there's nothing with the sewers or anything like that, has anything to fall that's-
You don't have anything to do with sewers or, you know, fire?
Traffic studies, anything like that.
Traffic studies, that kind of thing.
Okay. And I think that there was a lot of people that came confused away, I don't, can't be the only one that came away from the last meeting very confused.
There's, the, things get parceled out into different boards who have different responsibilities-
Including some of the board members last week.
And it's a complicated thing, we spend an entire semester in law school, understanding loan, land use regulation and how it works. So I don't, I'm not surprised at all that there might be some misunderstandings, and it's not just with this application, it's with many of the applications that are in front. That's why I try and explain these things as we go along.
And I just want to clarify for everyone here, the meeting at the town board is the meeting to talk about the rezoning to the R5, the proposed use, and whether or not it's going to be allowed at this location, and things like traffic and other environmental impacts. That's the board where all of those things need to be discussed.
And they will be, they, the zoning board is not, is not the one that create that, uh, yeah, that changes it to the R5?
No.
That's the town board.
Town board. Okay.
All right, but thank you for coming. Next person.
Hello, Bill Gamble, 328 Monary Drive. How do I have standing? I was married into church, all three of my kids were baptized there, and I've lived in the town for 31 years. You know, it's a little disingenuous to say it doesn't matter who we're doing business with. Anyone in this room can do this. Go to Capstone Real Estate Limited Liability, look at their website. They have four sections in their website. One, commercial. One building, 330 East Avenue. The other building, 100 Savannah Street. East Avenue, not grade A, is probably one of the lower buildings on East Avenue. 100 Savannah Street is where their office is. The front of it is Frye, The Wheelman, an auto parts store. All right, we have four sections, commercial rental. In rental, we have 45 Charlotte Street, maybe five apartments. And then there's another building, 795 Monroe, which seems to be where we're headed with this building. It's a building that's been power washed and new windows put in it with inappropriate parking, inappropriate space for everything, and I think it's got 18 offices in it. Okay, here's the critical category, residential buildings. Capstone's Real Estate's website, it's blank. You'd think if they're advertising for residential development, there might be a reference, but it's blank. Mixed use, it's blank. So these guys have a total of four buildings they've done, and yet they come to us asking us to bend over backwards with variances right and left, and it really sounds like we're headed towards these substandard buildings I saw in the city. They really don't want to spend any money. Power wash the building, put up some new windows, have a crummy parking arrangement? How you have fire access to the side of that building where the lawn is and the trees? I don't know. But I would suggest that everyone take a look at their webpage. It seems like we're dealing with some people who are short on money, and short on power, short on how to get things done. And it's a little disingenuous to say it doesn't matter. It does. These are the people we're going to grant variances to, and if they can't deliver, we've made a mistake. Thank you.
Next.
My name is Douglas Seibert. I live at 32 Bellards Drive for 43-plus years. I strongly oppose this on many fronts. That nice photo we have there is purely fiction. The drawings don't show any fire escapes. I'm not sure if fire escapes are required for a three-story building, but I think they are. Would increase, increase the size of the footprint, bigger than what they're showing on the drawings. I believe the board has exercised the, the patience of Job listening to this, and you're going to listen a lot more. Please have the wisdom of Solomon to turn down the application.
My name is Pat McFarlane. I live at 333 Colebrook. It's Colebrook Drive, incidentally, not Colebrook Street, as the proponent said. My concern is a question, and that is with, let's assume for a minute that all of these variances get done and they turn this into a market rate set of apartments. What assurances do we have that in five or 10 years, they won't go to a government agency and after not having made the money they expect to on this conversion, they decide they can get a government grant to turn it into a low-income apartment complex? I think we're on a slippery slope here, just allowing this to turn into an apartment house. And I think that we really don't have any concrete assurances that these will always be, as they say, market rate apartments. Thank you.
Hello, my name is John Paul Schott. I live at 4386 St. Paul Boulevard. I happened to go to St. Thomas the Apostle for eight years, as did my four brothers and three sisters, Catholic family, of course. But I've grown up in this neighborhood, I've lived here my whole life. It's a residential neighborhood, it's not a neighborhood with apartment complexes. I know that's not your decision. My question is, is why are we having a public hearing for something you're not going to be able to make any actions on? I believe the, the zoning board's job here is to make a recommendation to the town board on changing the zoning. Am I wrong?
You're wrong. That's not our job.
We do not make recommendations to the town.
All right, then, procedurally, why are we having a public hearing tonight?
Because it was advertised as a public hearing, and the town decided that they were going to have public hearings. It, you know, the fact that we're sitting here and we're going to be here past midnight, perhaps, is not something that I'm sitting here saying, geez, that's great, but we give every, it was advertised, you people came, you're entitled to be heard, and we're going to listen.
Thank you.
But we don't make the decision that most of the comments so far have related.
I understand it. So I would just ask, so if, if this board is not able to do anything with all these words we're saying tonight, I would ask that you remember these when it is your turn.
If you, were you here at the beginning of the meeting?
I was here, yes.
The reason that we asked to have a compilation of all the public hearings with respect to Densmore is because it went, had been going on for about three years, and I wanted to make sure that we all remembered everything that was said by the applicant, the people in favor, the people opposed, the people who talked to us about that application. The same is going to be done here. If we aren't clear in comments that were made to us, we'll get the tapes of the meeting and we'll listen to them and, and refresh our recollections as to everything that everybody has said tonight. So it's not a waste of your time, it's not a waste of our time, but we are hearing a lot about things that we don't have any say.
Understood. And procedurally, it's very strange.
It is.
And when it comes to Article 78 proceedings about procedures being done properly, these are open doors that are going to open up the town for this thing to just be shot right down, which I think a lot of people will be happy to hear about. So that's all I had to say. Thank you.
You're welcome. Next. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition? If we could sort of form a line over on the wall of two or three people at a time, at least, so that we can move a little more quickly in between?
I'm Virginia Maurer. I live at 203 Pinecrest Drive. I'm about a block from the church. Okay. My concern is the dumpster. You've seen the property line. There's zero property lines on the parking lot side, and on the church side, there is only a small green space which has access for a driveway. You're talking 27 apartments, 54 people plus guests, that's a lot of garbage. So where are you putting the dumpster? And where is waste management pulling in to empty the dumpster? Because it is Colebrook Drive. That is where the kids walk every day. And that is access to residential housing right across the street.
That would be part of the site plan approval that would go in front of the planning board if the town board rezones.
Well, you just said you'd granting the, your, your job here tonight is to take a look at the dimensions and the zero property line.
Correct.
I'm sitting here saying the zero property lines cause an issue with the dumpster, which makes it very visible and eliminates the green space.
Where the dumpster's located is an issue that comes up in front of the planning board with the site plan. If we felt that the dumpster's location was somehow inappropriate for the, you know, whatever, but this planning board had approved it, we can't overrule the planning board, but we could deny the variance for that lot line and say you need to have more space, so.
Okay, I understand it. I went to the meeting for the planning board, the planning board punted to the zoning board, the zoning board is punting to the town board. I get it. It's all legal.
Well, we're not punting to anyone.
I, I understand.
We've been asked to consider variances that at this point aren't even really needed because it's not zoned R5 yet.
Great. You're all residents of Aronacote.
We are.
You're all my neighbors, okay? I love my neighborhood, I love, do a great job. But I am going to ask you, protect my home value and listen to us. I know you can't make a decision, but you are the people who are sitting here because you're smart, that's why we voted for you, so please listen to us, whether procedurally or we're not, okay?
Thank you.
Hi, Denise Flanagan, 4588 St. Paul Boulevard. I would echo everything everybody else says, and I don't want to go through all that because
that's not what you're about tonight, but I will speak on the parking. I am very concerned that the developer stated that the, the church has ample parking. That is true. But that precludes the ability to grow, which, as a member of that church, I'm planning on our church growing. I saw a site plan, I think it was back in February, and the document said that the church requires one space for every three, three persons of occupancy. So to my calculation, that is, the occupancy of the church is nearly 1,000, so we'll be a little conservative and we'll say that that's 300 spots. On the site plan, I counted up the numbers that were listed for the parking spots, and it doesn't even come near that. So to take another chunk of our parking spots out would be a concern. And quite honestly, on Saturday night, when somebody who lives in one of these apartments comes home and there's a big empty parking lot, except for their 21 designated spots, but those are all filled, are they really going to look back at the basketball hoop and think they're going to park there and then walk all the way across? I kind of think not. And I, I am concerned that the, they'll look at their car and they'll say, well, I'll wake up tomorrow morning, and they're just going to think I'm in the church. Who's going to know the difference when they take another one of the spots? Another thing, too, is in the wintertime, when we have a tremendous amount of snowfall, we plow the excess snow to the southern end of the parking lot, which covers up some of the spots, which I believe are some of the spots that are in, are the extra spots that the developer is proposing to use. I could say a lot more, but I guess I can save it for next week since this isn't about all the other things I might say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Peter LaPietra. I live on 94 Harvington Drive. I, I live, I'm also a member of the Latin Mass Community at St. Cattery, St. Cattery Latin Mass Community at St. Thomas. My concern- My concern is just to add on to the parking concern. There's an element here that's kind of missing, is you have this group within St. Cattery that has their own agreement about use of that facility, and there's this possibility in the future that if the numbers grow, that will reach a parish status, and if we reach parish status, that will increase the use of the parking lot. And the kind of, this plan either assumes that there is going to be no growth, or it's going to fail. So there's just this thing kind of sitting with the whole parking arrangement. And somebody mentioned about how parking is used at the old rectory. Well, we use the rectory for CCD and for community lunch, you know, events. So there's traffic back and forth from the church to the, you know, right after mass, in between masses, which, you know, you know, I don't see this parking plan being feasible in the long, in the long term. I only see more and more problems with the tenants and the community, which, it's ironic because the people, if we reach this agreement, if we get to a parish status, all these deals that are being made by St. Cattery will just kind of be given to us, as is. And it's like, sorry, this is the agreement we made with the apartment complex, and you have to live with it. So there's, like I said, this is, this is just element that hasn't really discussed, but it's real. And that's one of my major concerns about this plan in regards to what you can handle, which is the parking. All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition to the application?
Hello, my name's Mary Sapon. I live at 407 Washington Avenue, and I certainly am opposed to this, but I'm not going to waste your time with all of my reasons why. They're similar to everybody else's. I did want to come up here, really just as a matter of my own education of then the next steps, and I know you guys have been really trying to explain it to everybody in this room. We're not all attorneys in this room, although I'm really wishing that I was. Next, and I don't know, I don't know, what is your name, deputy town attorney?
It's Rob.
Rob, so Rob, you went through the things that, at town board meeting, that we're going to be discussing. Could you please just do that again? So I, to like, I mean, exactly what is going to be discussed at the July 18th meeting? What decisions are going to be made? And then I think it's probably also appropriate to share what then happens after that.
Actually, ma'am, do you mind if I address that?
That would be fine with me.
Rob Brenner is the deputy town attorney for this board and the planning board, but he's not the attorney for the town board. And so I can explain. At the July 18th meeting at 7:35, a public hearing is going to be conducted on the application to consider the rezoning of the property as presented in the application to the town board. At that time, the applicant will be invited to speak first at the public hearing, similar to this board and the planning board. It's customary for the applicant to speak first. And then after that, the public hearing is obviously still open, and public comment and input from anyone who's interested in speaking will be heard. The town board typically has a time limit on the public input, but I can, off the top of my head, I can't quote it. So, but that would be explained procedurally. Once all the comments have been, you know, heard for that evening, the board would then make a determination of whether or not they're keeping the public hearing open, or they're going to close the public hearing. That's something that you really can't predict ahead of time. And so what I can say is the only other item that the town board will be acting on is there is a resolution to declare itself lead agency for the purposes of SEAKER. And SEAKER, again, I apologize, it's an acronym, and it stands for State Environmental Quality Review Act, and it's something that New York State requires discretionary decision-makers to undertake before they can make their decision. So lead agency status doesn't conclude the SEAKER process. It actually just says, okay, now the town board can officially be the one to examine the environmental assessment form and make a determination of significance related to environmental impact. And so there's a form or series of forms that goes with that, and they'll have to wait until they have all the information they need to review those impacts and make a determination of significance. Once a determination of significance has been made by the town board, and they're the only board that can make a determination of significance for the purposes of SEAKER, once that determination of significance is made, then individually, the boards will take up the application. The town board would be the first board to take up the application before them because their decision impacts the remaining...
The rest of the boards.
The other boards.
So the only thing, the only thing that's going to happen on July 18th is determining if it's got R5.
No, it's going to be the public hearing.
Okay, so nothing's being determined on the 18th?
The town board is not going to be in a position legally because of SEAKER to make a decision on the 18th. They can have the public hearing. They can determine whether or not they're going to continue the public hearing to a following meeting, but there cannot be a decision at the town board level until SEAKER, the environmental review part of it, is closed. And because the boards, because there is a coordinated review, that environmental review component takes a little bit more time because it's coordinating among the agencies that have a decision to make, and that requires each board to, in a public meeting setting, and by virtue of a motion, agree to allow the town board to be that lead agent for the purposes of environmental review. And so it's not because they don't want to make a decision, it's because legally, they have to complete the SEAKER process completely and properly before any board can make a decision.
Did everybody get that? Okay, well, thank you, thank you very much.
I feel, and we can certainly put more information up on the website related to the SEAKER process and how that works, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
My name is Margaret Corbin. I hate to say it, but I was born on Pine Crest Drive, and then my parents built a house in 1938 on Colebrook, and I bought it in 1977. So I don't want to say I'm here longer than anybody else, but it's close.
So, excuse me, what's your address on Colebrook?
333. Thank you. I'm confused because I called the town hall today, and I got a call back, and I understood that the business tonight is different than what is happening in the room. So whoever I talked to at town hall told me something different. And so after listening to that description, I'm still not clear at all about what it would be worthwhile for us to come and talk about as individual members of the community at the town meeting, which I'm planning to come to, but...
I don't think, I mean...
I think there's another level of confusion that was the other level, is that the person that is going to build the property, wants to make this happen, talked about everything. So it made it seem like we could talk about everything. You know, he talked about, you know, parking and fire and all of that. So if the presenter presents certain topics, and then we could talk about those same topics, it would probably be easier for those of us who are not trained in the field. I, you know, just...
I concur with you completely.
So is that a possibility, when they make their presentation on Tuesday, if they just presented about the kind of thing that the public could talk about, then we would probably be able to stay on the topic better? I'm just, it's a thought. I do group work for a living.
Francis Burdick, 4560 St. Paul Boulevard. I came tonight with all my notes on R5. So apparently, you're not here to listen to that, but we do have some things about their proposed apartment structure, that it does not fit the property, front, back, side, or height. Now, these are variances that you have control over, and you should be able to see that it doesn't fit. Doesn't fit the neighborhood, doesn't fit the community. Their multiple variance requests are inadequate, I would think. Now, it's in my backyard, this school building, and I like to sit out in the backyard at night, look at the sky, wander about the universe. You know, hey, don't we all sometimes? Now, with 27 apartments over there, say 50 people coming and going day and night, air conditioners, 27 units on a roof, I don't think I have that peace and quiet anymore. Now, what you have to think about is, would you want it in your backyard? And that's about all I got to say for tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak in opposition to the application? Step right up.
Excuse me, my voice is a little hoarse. I've been selling flowers all day, and as soon as I get cleared, I think you'll be able to hear me. I don't know if I like you better with your other hairdo or the one that you have.
Would you state your name and address, please?
Sorry, my name is Fred Curran, C-U-R-R-A-N. I live at 195 Washington Avenue. That's on the south side of the property that we are discussing tonight. The driveway goes up next to my house from Washington Avenue into, into the parking lot. Things that we won't make any difference right now, as far as the zoning, but just a comment, if we get these variances, and we change this over to, from an R1 to an R5, and this project goes south, what are we going to do with the rest of that parking lot? That then opens up the convent or the church parish center for whatever would fit R5, and that's not the neighborhood. And that would take up that whole parking lot, just exactly of what we've accomplished to do down here at St. Salons. That used to be a church, a school, just like St. Thomas. It's now full of apartments. Now, the church is coming down, additional apartments. And the church, I believe, across the street is going to come down in additional apartments. Now, they didn't have to apparently go through the whole process of getting the zoning changed because we have bars, we have bowling alleys, love putt-putt, putt-putt golf, but we don't have putt-putt golf in Maywood Association. What else do we have? Seabreeze is great, the restaurants are great, but in that neighborhood, we don't have any of those things. We moved in, I think next month will be 49 years. I probably would have been a little bit sooner or a little bit more, but we made an offer on our home about four months prior to that, and the real estate agent for the seller never gave the seller the offer. And my wife, my wife just about kicked me every day I come home from work and said, call him, call him, call him. Why? I want to know what we're going to do as far as the offer we made. And I said, I made an offer. The agent is supposed to give it to him. If he didn't like it, he could counter it, and if I didn't like it, we could, you know, counter that or whatever. So finally, I called the real estate agent, and his wife said, oh, I didn't think you were serious. Now, this same real estate agent, it so happened, also had a house for a friend of my wife who she went to school with, and when we accidentally happened to be discussing that situation, she said, oh, that's the same real estate agent we had. We'd go out on Sunday, come back, and no one came into the house. They couldn't figure it out. Now, not to put down every agent, but the real estate agent, and I believe it was the first meeting here, made a comment to the effect that we had a sale. We had a for-sale sign up there that's, people have mentioned it now, it's been up there for months. All of a sudden, there's a sign that says, sale pending. Now, I'm not a real estate agent. I haven't gone to school for any legal courses other than law, business law. But if some, if a sign goes up and says, sale pending, you may not have the property sold, but at least you have someone who has an interest, and I assume has made some kind of an offer.
I believe that's correct, yes.
I kind of assume that's not a truth. You know, I won't say the other word that begins with an L, but I, it's not truthful.
My understanding is that the applicant has put in an offer...
No, I am just making a comment. No.
That's been accepted, and that's made with certain conditions. One of the conditions being that the town board will rezon the property, and that is a conditional offer.
Yeah, but this, but this, but this, no, what I'm trying to say is, this real estate person said, we do not have an offer. And the only thing they were there for, as they said, is to separate the church or the school from the church, and then they would put everything up and hopefully get an offer. That was, that was the way the comment came out of this agent. Now, this was, you know, had the pastor of the parish was standing behind this gentleman as he said, and I say, not an L word, but it wasn't truthful. That bothers me. You know, that's, that's my experience with two realtors. Hopefully, I don't have to deal with any more. Just passed my 80th birthday, and I plan to live in Aronacote for a long time. Hopefully, I'll be able to live in the house that I have right now. In the last meeting we had, and it hasn't been mentioned here, but I'll just, as long as nobody's making a decision on anything here, you can probably talk about anything. So it doesn't make any difference. I guess I have five minutes, but...
If there were a five-minute limitation, I think you're coming close to the end of it, but there isn't. But if you could...
Oh, thank you. You just opened the door.
I'm asking you not to push the door wide open.
I hear you. However, now what I use, I lost my train of thought here for a minute. The neighborhood is starting to change over. On my street, 195 Washington Avenue, we probably have five or six new neighbors with young children. You know, we had three. The one still lives in the town here, two others, one in Washington, one in Greensville, North Carolina. The neighbors across the street had two. They both live out of town. People lined up the street, older families, had lots of kids. In fact, the first day I moved in, had two boys at the time, had three little boys come up, and they said, do you have anyone here who can play, who we can play with? And I said, yes, we have two boys, but you have to play in my backyard. They played in my backyard from that time until they started going into, into grade school. One tree was home plate, another tree was first base, second base, and third base. We still have second and third, and my wife finally got her flower bed in the backyard. That's the kind of neighborhood we have. One of the, one of the people on the last meeting we had said, I would like the vision of a place for people to see Aronacote and like to come to. I've said that for years. We have Bridge Road. There used to be one car dealer after another one up the street. We have one gas station after another up the street. We now... We now have Delusonic that has a car wash. We have halfway up the street, we have another car wash, and on the other end of the street, we have another car wash going over. Which one of the car washes do you think the people from, and he pointed out, Fairport and Webster, they have, "We don't have a canal going through our town, so people aren't going to come and see our canal." Are they going to come and see our car washes? No. And we talked about Aldi, and they moved in, and they guessed in the grocery store tonight, want a variance to do something like that. We have a grocery store on that side of the street. We have a grocery store, Wegmans, on the other side of the street. We used to have a restaurant in that parking lot. That's moved up on Ridge Road now. We used to have, we've had about three, three, just about two minutes, we have, we used to have about four pizza places on Titus Avenue. We now have I Square, and they had a discussion on whether or not, you know, you got a, he wanted a variance to take a building down, I believe, so we can have more parking space so that people will come there. We do have a little bit of a town in that small square, but really, local people, I believe, are the ones who come, not the ones on the outside. Arondacoyte, Maywood, that association is where people come to to live. We want to come, live in our one-family buildings. We don't want apartments like we have over here at Salons and all over the place on that corner. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Next, next person who'd like to speak in opposition to the application? Step right up.
Brian Skrals, 111 Bellhurst Drive. I've heard a lot of interesting solutions tonight. I've heard tear the building down. I've heard change the look of it, change the parking, do this, do that, reconsider whether or not you can buy more land, so maybe eliminate the setbacks. The thing I've not heard out of the developer are alternate solutions. Why do they have to do this? Why do they have to have shared parking? What happens if the church turns around and sells the church? Parking lot goes with it. Now what do the people in the apartments do? I thought this was part of your process, things like, does it change the character of the neighborhood? What are the alternatives you've considered as a developer? Am I wrong?
No.
Good. Is it up and coming?
Yes.
Great.
And to answer the question, if there's an, which Mr. Polino raised, the question of whether there would be a written agreement with the church concerning the parking spaces, that agreement would also follow the church as well. So if somebody bought the church, they're stuck with the agreement about the parking spaces being available to the apartment.
That's irrevocable.
Right.
Okay.
And the, I think the applicant did mention that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Dan here. I live at 376 Washington Avenue and have for 41 years with the wife Rosalie. I'm not Catholic, but I went to McQuaid and John Fisher, so I'll get a little love here. I think what number 407 Washington Avenue, who couldn't take it anymore and had to leave, was getting at is, in a vernacular, "We're concerned. We don't know who the shot caller here is. We're confused. We can't give a fellow three feet for his garage, but we can give these people the world to put 27 units on .94 of an acre." Well, I live in a beautiful house at 376 on a half an acre with a side yard, and that means that I could put at least five units in there, and the next five houses down the row are all on an acre. So what's five times 27? And we could get a variance for that, and we'd be all right. The people could park in the parking lot, or the baseball fields there, we could take that fence down. You get my drift? This whole thing is akin to marijuana. It's a gateway drug. We're going to go from R1 to R5, and we're going to open Pandora's box, and whoever the shot caller is, is going to do what he damn well pleases.
As I said before, the only one who determines whether it goes from R1 to R5 is the town board.
I understand, and I do commend you all for your patience. This is, this is quite an adventure, but it's also clear that the people of Arondacoyte, especially the Washington Avenue-Colbrook area, seem to exhibit a lot of fortitude with respect to this matter. But again, you've been patient, you've been very kind to us because we did get a little rowdy. But having said that, I don't think it's going to go away, and I would just pose one question before I go. Who's going to call a shot, and which way is this going to go? Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to address the board in opposition to the application? Is there anyone who wants to talk about it? You're not opposed to it, you're not for it, you just want to talk about it. Step right up, sir. Can you step up to the podium so everybody can hear you?
Jim Clark, 742 Eaton Road. I have a quick question. Is the traffic pattern and all that a variance issue?
No.
No. They're going to do a, they are going to do a traffic study on this property, is that correct?
One of the possible elements, as I understand it, of the seeker process is a traffic study.
Oh, isn't it? Isn't it in my process?
That, and there's pages of things, you know.
I thought those were separate.
Soil, pervious soil, impervious surfaces, environmental, you know, what kind of birds come and land on the roof, what kind of, you know, flowers are growing there and plants, and whether any of them are protected, and there's a whole litany of things that they have to go through, and traffic is on the list.
Okay, good.
Whether that means that a traffic study will be requested or not is another question that we don't have anything to do with. We've told the town board that we think they should be the lead agency on this, and they're the ones who will decide whether they want to order a traffic study.
So the driveway isn't a variance issue at all?
No.
Okay, all right. I was just curious.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to talk about it? Step right up.
Aurora Shellhorn, Pine Grove Avenue, 527. I have a question because I don't know the answer to it. You keep referring to the dioceses. I'd like to know who actually owns the building and controls it. Is it the dioceses, or is it St. Cattery?
My understanding is that it's owned by the diocese.
Is that true?
There's someone back there who would appear to, from appearances, to be a Catholic official who could probably answer that question better than me.
Thank you. Hello?
Just for the record, I'm Father Paul English. I'm the pastor of St. Cattery Parish, 445 Kings Highway South. The actual buildings at St. Thomas all belong to St. Cattery Parish. The, it's a civil corporation, Cattery Techic with a Roman Catholic parish of Monroe County, and they belong to us. We are, of course, always in complete conjunction with the bishop of the diocese and will always follow his guidelines, but in terms of ownership, it belongs to us, including the church and the, what we call the parish center there as well. They belong to us completely.
Okay, thank you, pastor. Father, I'm sorry.
So, so the decision to all of this is all being prepared and done by only them, even though-
You'd have to ask the father about that because-
Yeah, right? The decision to change it into a school apartment building is strictly from your idea? Cattery? I'm sorry. It's just such a point of confusion for us all.
As the legal owner of the buildings, as the legal owner of the buildings, it is our job to handle any of the business of the parish. Again, we do everything in conjunction with our bishop because I have no authority or no ministry without Bishop Metano, and so all of these things are done in conjunction with diocesan authorities. But in terms of a legal entity, St. Cattery Parish is the owner of all of the buildings and all of the former five parishes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Father. Is there anyone else that wants to talk to us about this application? Seeing none? I don't think the applicant is still here.
He's out there.
Chairman, can we leave the-
We'll leave it open.
Open.
Completely open.
Did you want to address anything at this point, given that we're not making any decisions tonight, and we're going to leave the public hearing open, and we're going to come back on another night to take this up after you find out whatever the town board wants to do, and maybe we won't be back, depending on what they do?
Not at this time.
All right, thank you. I was hoping you would say that. Then we're going to, we're going to keep the public hearing open, but we're going to pause it for tonight, and we will take a 10-minute recess.
Come back in the morning.
All right, we are back in session, and we will take up the items on the agenda in the order in which the applicants are still present. And it appears, and looking around the room, that the only applicant that's still present is the engineer for Aldi's, which is number-
1707-4.
These aren't numbered, though.
Four, yes, they are.
Where?
They're numbered in the middle of the agenda after the time of the hearing.
It's late.
Oh, on the packet? No, they're not numbered on the packet.
I don't know which packet they'll dig out.
So-
So this precludes a motion to adjourn?
Yes. We don't move to adjourn, we just declare ourselves adjourned when we're ready. I'm looking for my, there we go. All right, so this is a type 2 action for seeker, I believe.
Unlisted.
Unlisted action.
Actually, in, oh, yes, forgive me. Now I need to go take a nap.
All right, I would move that we make a negative declaration.
Second.
You second it?
I do.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Seven in favor, no abstaining, we're all present, and, all right. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the request for the variance with the following findings. There's no change to the character of the neighborhood since it's all inside. There are alternatives, but this is the, this one makes the most sense because it's the least complicated and economically the most feasible one. It's not a very substantial request. We're talking about taking down a wall and putting up a little different wall, and it's a situation self-created. I suppose you could say it is because, but that's because the business is growing, and they need more, more space. So that's why I move we approve.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Any abstentions? Motion carries. Six votes in favor, one opposed. All members are present.
Aye.
I don't know if it's appropriate, some of the ideas they have for landscaping and the hose bid.
No.
No.
Those are not appropriate as conditions for an area variance. Those are matters that they can take with code enforcement if they were supposed to be a part of the project, and they can take them up with Aldi's if they're not. All right, so going back to the top, we have Mr. Smith's application on 89 La Grande Road. This is type 2 action for seeker purposes, that I was sure of. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we grant the variance as applied for to allow the applicant to replace the existing fence. This will have no negative impact on the environment as they're replacing a fence with something that's chain-linked in an area where a fence already exists. It is not self-created in that the individual purchased the property with the fence in its current location, and in fact, they're moving it in a little farther. It's the least intrusive means necessary to achieve what they want, which is fence coverage, and this is not going to impair the neighborhood in any way, shape, or form.
I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Seven votes in favor. Oh, I should have asked, any abstentions?
Could I add one additional finding before we close that one out? Additional finding that there is no snow plowing of the sidewalk by the town alongside the fence, which differentiates it from other cases. Will you still second that?
Yes.
And will we all still agree with that?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
I was going to ask. Next application is 76 Lafayette Road. This is a type 2 action for seeker purposes. This is a special use permit application, not a variance application. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to the latest request to have chickens in the town?
I don't have all the conditions in front of me, so.
I'll make a motion that we grant the special use permit subject to the following conditions. That annually, the applicant shall submit to the town a certificate from a veterinarian indicating that the chickens that are present are free from any disease, that the coop be located at least eight feet from any property lines or fences, that the occupancy of the coop is limited to four hens and no roosters, that the town will inspect and report to the board within a year whether there are any issues, and that the applicant will install an appropriate depth ground barrier of at least 18 inches and preferably 24 or more.
I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? We all remain present. Motion carries. Seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, and no one is absent. Oh, there was. Wasn't at the top. The last item on the agenda is the application by Mr. Raymond for an area variance for the garage at 828 Hellendale Road. This is a type 2 action for seeker purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.